That will be picked up by microphones from now on.
Jenna, how are you?
I'm going along right now.
Jesse Arrow, yeah, you'll see the toner thing. You should always be checked, yeah. The time of time, you just make sure it's picking up right.
Okay.
It's your two minute warning? Or in council, probably two minute timeout? Because everybody thought two minute warning was trademarked. And so we went after the two minute timeout rule. They didn't do it, and then they found out actually it isn't trademarked.
Oh, it wasn't signed.
They called the jumping.
But yeah, when Division III adopted that rule this year, I was like, why are we calling it two minute warning? You're like, long story. I saw this article about busting through your road. Was it your name coming through with that?
Yeah, LeBron Antsman.
But did they come down here to go over? Really?
But where is seven? How soon did you get there?
I'm trying to think what else.
Did it take 29 minutes?
I was gonna say 29. Yeah.
29 minutes, yeah.
As someone who travels west a lot, I always cut three. I feel like 29 is a little. And you can step behind the Walmart around 29.
Yes, you do.
It's good, it's good.
Yeah, Kevin, those are high. It's not really a violation, we never see Kevin.
I keep them.
Yeah, is that, tell them to sit high, okay? Please rise for official allegiance to the left, John Probie, we're never here tonight.
A bunch of ladies to the flag of the United States of America. In the color which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its heart.
So, back to you. Welcome to the first radio meeting of the 2025 year here for the Board of Trustees. Anything exciting happen last couple weeks? Nah. So, we still have one other meeting this month on the 27th, for those wondering, so four total meetings will happen. Got a bunch of minutes to get to here, so let's begin with those. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the December 9th, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fandanza?
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the December 16th, 2024 special meeting be approved? Trustee Fandanza?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
So, I came late, but the one piece that needs editing is it says it's a regular board meeting at the top of the minutes, but it's a special board meeting, so.
Would you accept the change on that, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Okay.
And for the rest of us, same.
Oh, okay.
We missed it.
I will go aye as well, because I can tell that we're gonna give their vote on this one. Opposed? For that one, I think you were here. This is?
It was June 16th.
December 16th.
That's a special meeting.
It was special meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I came to have it.
I'm getting confused, I know I missed one.
So, all in favor?
Wait, didn't I come, I thought it was at seven, or was it?
Yeah, you, you didn't, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
You were here.
I'm from you.
Gosh. They're all blending together now. Okay, so, the three guesses will be Mary, Bernadette, and me, just for the record. Opposed, abstentions? Abstentions, this will be your time to abstain?
Abstaining.
Okay, trustee Baskin, trustee Raymond abstaining. Minutes are approved with the change noted. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the January 2nd, 2025 special meeting be approved? Trustee Fandanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Well, as you know, I think it was organizational meeting, but I will approve the minutes.
No idea. Oh, we do need, yeah, we're going to probably, the time is shaded, as Bernadette's pointing out there about the accident.
Do you want to just say after recess was called, or during recess?
Before recess, perhaps, yeah. Let's make that change to denote more specifically when that occurred, because it's kind of shaded note right now instead of actually in line text.
It was right after.
Yeah.
Right, sorry, it's right, yeah.
Alright, I'll say.
So, change acceptable to both of you? Okay, we'll make that change as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can we, can Sean and I do that, can vote on it if we left early?
Yeah, you're there for.
Technically, you can vote on any, any set of minutes, so long as you're reviewed done, so.
You're not there.
Yeah.
Not there.
In this day and age with, you know, Zoom meetings and everything, and YouTube and all that. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the January 6th, 2025 organizational meeting be approved? Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No presentations, let's go to public comment on agenda items only. As always, three minutes per speaker. If you're on Zoom, this will be the time to raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak. If anybody in the house here would like to speak, raise your hand, and we'll ask you to go to the podium right behind trustee Raymond over there. See, double hands for agenda items? Zoomers, you have one chance here, we got Keith Lewis, and agenda items only.
Got on the agenda, Keith Lewis, 38th St., Boston Spa.
On the agenda, we can't talk about it currently, you can wait for the second public comment session later on, if that's the case.
I said you have on the agenda to approve a meeting for a law that's being proposed. And the law is about opening up the interpretation of when the organizational meeting will be held. Thirty-four times in the January 2nd and January 6th meeting, thirty-four times. Trustee Bernadette and Mayor Frank Rossi spoke about this wasn't scheduling, it had to do with other issues. Nothing to do with scheduling, nothing to do with scheduling, nothing to do with scheduling. This law that you're proposing allows whatever administration to decide in a two-week window of when they would like to do the organizational. The problem, the reason why the village had set up an organizational meeting for a specific day is so that the village residents can depend on that day to participate. You appointed 52 people, 52 people. When that agenda comes out on a Friday, the meeting is for a Monday, people are able to look at it, they're able to process it, they're able to call trustees, they're able to call people that have influence on trustees and talk about those appointments. And that is why I spoke up about trustee Mary Price Bush voting to have that meeting on the 2nd, because her husband had made those recommendations of police, and that was being heard. And, and those police should be able to have people say positive things about them prior to the meeting. The organizational meeting date should be set so that the village can depend upon it.
Any else who have any questions? Guess not. Any else on Zoom, this will be the time to raise your hand for agenda items only. Oh, Gina. Somebody remind me to put it back later, if I can get it in the right direction there.
You don't have to look at me.
No, it's part and parcel of who we are.
Gina Marosi, excuse me, 10 Old Glory Lane, Boston Spa. First of all, I'd love to thank Donna Duffy for her service to the village. I see she's resigning. I'm sad to see that, she was a great asset to our village, and I know that they are enjoying some retirement time, so. Good luck to her, and thank you. Excuse me, allergies, not sick folks, just reiterating. Also, there was one more thing, excuse me. Oh, I'm glad to see that the DPW is going to be going for the water class, the water training class, that's very important to our village. And I don't think people realize how much dedication there is to that position. The water has to be tested and documented every single day, 365 days a year. So, that's a lot on our people, and we appreciate them. Other than that, I think I'll move with any plans.
I'm glad to weigh that out, though, because we definitely are going to be working on getting more training for DPW down the line, something that they've asked us for, and be glad to make sure they can identify some more courses and supposings or whatever to get them out of that training, we'd love to do that for them, as I said, it's important stuff. Okay, anyone else in the room or on Zoom on agenda items only? See, none, there is no consent agenda tonight. And let's go to A, as Gina pointed out, motion that the resignation of clerk Donna Duffy be accepted effective immediately.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin?
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Obviously, she will be missed, and we appreciate her service for sure. She's, she did a great job.
How many years?
A while.
A while?
Put it that way. She may have written in her letter, but I don't know, nope, it does not say number of letters, but, there are a number of years. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the attached list of equipment be declared surplus?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Raymond?
I'll second.
Trustee Price, oh, your trustee Fandanza, now I'm doing it, yeah. Discussion. And that is the correct terminology, right? Because we always go back and forth, is it excess, is it surplus? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached memorandum of understanding between the Friends of Boston Spa Public Library Incorporated and the Village of Boston Spa, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement? Trustee Price Bush, trustee Fandanza, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. If I can take a timeout, Christine Fitzpatrick of the Friends of Boston Spa Public Library Incorporated is here with us, and we decided this would be a good time to sign the agreement in person live, and we even marked the moment with a couple of special pens that we got for the moment, on my dime, don't worry, this is not village funding. See who's this who's, I didn't pay attention. This is Friends of the Library?
Oh, thank you very much.
And this is the Village of Boston Spa?
Yeah, you guys should.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Maybe go over that angle would be better.
Okay, now you're getting.
Yeah, I know. Christine, hold on.
Don't be through again, folks.
I tested it earlier, so it should break fine, a little pressure. Can you move? Do you want to take that?
Yeah, do we, can I, may I?
Oh, sure.
That's a little.
I should come up like this, okay.
Yeah, signature right by the pie, and then print name on the next, there you go. So, yours to keep also, so. Same right here.
And may we sign both two copies?
Sure, go for it.
Yeah. That way, nobody has to bother you.
Sorry, I leave this in.
Sorry. Thanks, guys.
Jerry? That'll be yours.
My turn?
Yeah, is yours the key?
Okay.
This box and this top are all yours?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to let every friend have to, you know, just be like in Catholic school, sent home to statue.
Yeah.
Every friend gets a key for me, thank you.
We're trying to quiet things off a little bit around here, you know? Okay. But in all seriousness, just want to say thank you to the library board, because they've been working so hard on this. The Friends of the Library as well, and couldn't have done what we're doing without them, and their support and fundraising and everything else that went with it, so. I just, I just wish Christine, the snow held out for a little bit longer, because it's making it more of a challenge over there, but they're definitely getting through it over there.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, can I get a motion that the DPW working supervisor be authorized to attend a water training class at a cost of $225?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Raymond, trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the DPW be authorized to expend the amount of $12,330 for road soap? Trustee Price Bush? Second, or? I feel like I could hear a section.
I'll second.
You got it, okay.
I did it for my second page.
You had a chance. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that Eagle Matt Lee Fire Company Number One be authorized to expend the amount of $18,640.27 for equipment? Trustee Fandasa?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. I'm liking this, my right keeps dropping her phone over here.
This is within the budget, it's not.
That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a, oh, I have one handle, this is Mad Attorney.
Well, let's do it from, let's look at the law itself. So, you have the law.
Yeah.
The board has, has the text of the law, it's also in the meeting minutes, or in the agenda. What you need to do is declare yourselves lead agency. You all have a copy of the EAF Part 1, so declare yourselves lead agency. And if the board is comfortable with the language as is written there, then you can just set a public hearing.
Okay, so can I get a motion declaring the Village of Boston Spa?
There's a resolution. We have a resolution.
You want to get the resolution?
No.
Yeah, I can happily do that, I mean, I, I've done it before. I'll do it again.
She just wants you to say a resolution rather than a motion.
Ah, okay.
Unless you really want to read it.
I could.
I'm not saying too bad, but.
Can I get a motion approving a resolution?
Just keep it on.
How would you like to word it?
The resolution declaring the board trustees lead agency for Local Law 1 of 2025.
What she said.
I'll make it.
Trustee Fandasa?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I guess my own, you know, maybe, maybe I missed an email or explained it, but what is the meaning for this change exactly?
Well, as we've noticed from the whole back and forth and round and round, the desire to have immediate board appointments, basically, which had historically occurred when we had March elections and April, start of the official year. The official year would start in April on a certain day, oaths would be signed on that day, appointments would occur on that day. Now, obviously, the official year now starts on January 1st, so New Year's Day, we're not going to have a meeting most likely, unless there was an actual, or absolute need to do that. But the opportunity to get appointments as soon as practicable, basically, after January 1st. This year it simplified the problem, because we would have gone until January 6th. That was the whole point of, you know, confusion that was going on back then. And so, you'll end up some years with clerks, deputy clerks, treasurer, deputy treasurer, et cetera. Those are some of the appointments that might be made in any given year, that might be openings, because most likely, those folks would resign or end as of December 31st of the prior year. So, to make sure that we're not having gaps in service, essentially, the idea was to make sure we could have the meeting as quickly as possible moving forward. Now, the board will subdate, at least, is what the text says, and trustee Baskin had proposed a little bit of counterlanguage that got included in there, and Ben can attest, I think, that that language got absorbed into it after back and forth. So, the idea, again, is to just give a little bit more flexibility with the hope of expediting the meeting, not delaying that meeting ultimately, and putting a range of dates that occur, basically, between the start of the official year and the, what would normally be the first regular meeting by the Village of Boston Spa on the second Monday of January.
So, this is more for, so if we didn't appoint staff, the existing staff wouldn't be able to do the job from the previous appointment?
Well, I, the idea is that most likely, now that the election moved, those folks will have plenty of time to go get new jobs, that will most likely start on January 1st elsewhere, or that that's what they would probably aim to do, keep the consistent paycheck. So, they would probably end on December 31st is the concern, so they don't have to. And, you know, most of the time, you're going to assume that they're going to go through to the end of the actual term, December 31st. And so, this is a protection built in to essentially give us the right and ability to get new folks in there, and also for the boards and committees that want to start holding meetings right away, or get the education set up and everything else. So, the days matter, and that's what we were trying to say back when during all the back and forth and, you know, rock and a set occurred around here. But, you know, long story short, it's, it's given the proper flexibility. When we look back at this, we're like, how did we even get to this point? Because that wasn't the way we had done it back when, the March-April scenario was. It used to be bang, bang, bang on April. I, the official year, when I took office, was started on April 4th, I signed my oath on April 4th. I, we did the swearing oath, it's more from, you know, not really what gets us in, it's the oath signing that gets us in, but we do it still as formally.
Yeah, right. The oath signing isn't necessary.
Well, no, the oath signing is, the oath signing is required. It's the, the actual, you know, with the judge.
You can do that ahead of time.
But everything was on April 4th, the appointments, the organizational stuff, et cetera. So, everything was all at once. This is trying to mimic, again, as closely as possible, so that we don't have laps in government type of situations of us.
Yeah, I understand that. For swearing somebody in, like a newly elected official, that could be done on the, the regular meeting in December. I mean, that's right?
No.
No.
No. That's what the Department of State Public Officers Law says.
No, actually, no, the oath has to be taken. That's what brings them to office, you can't swear someone in until they find, they actually sign the oath.
So, the oath is not being sworn in?
Two different things. The oath is.
Well, I'm just going by the law, they said you take the oath of office, you can take it before your term begins.
The oath, correct, that's different from the swearing in. You sign the oath, you have to sign and file the oath of office within 30 days of when you, the first of the year, or whenever your date is. That's different, the swearing in the ceremonial moment.
Yeah, that, so when the judge shows up and we do that, that's really just.
So, why, if it's a ceremony, why do we do it at all?
Uh, because the folks would like.
I mean, I didn't do it after I got reelected, I just signed it.
In '21, but I think it was because of COVID issues back then, to be honest with you, like I went out and emailed the other day. That's why I was, that's actually why I was asking you an email the other day. How did it work in '21? Because I couldn't remember either with the COVID situation. That's a, that's a.
I don't think it had anything to do with COVID, as a matter of fact. It also says in the public officers law that there doesn't have to be a swearing in, you just have to sign your oath.
Correct.
That's what I said.
Yeah, and that can be done ahead of time.
Right. That, yes, that's what I said.
Right.
We signed the oath, to give you an example.
Sounds like Carla was saying that what Sean was saying was wrong, but actually, what Sean was saying is.
Well, let me, let me, let me clarify, based on, so if I'm wrong. Last year, Mary, Bernadette, and I signed the oath on January 1st in here, and the meeting, appointments, organization, all that stuff happened on January 7th, because the calendar fell correctly, so we didn't know any differently at that point what was supposed to happen or not happen. So, it happened immediately, basically. So, okay, you're, you're willing to go one day lapse, essentially. Going five days of lapse without possibly a treasurer, or possibly a clerk, or whatever, depending on the year it is, is more of a problem, obviously, because you want continuity of government, you need to have staffing in here and everything else. And that's, that's the danger ultimately, that we.
It would just be simpler to say staffing of appointments terminates the, the first Monday after the first.
You can't do that.
No, because that's extending the term unnaturally. That's, that's the problem, Sean. I'm trying, I'm trying to flag to you where this sort of gets problematic, and it's supposed to be a term, we, we do term it as no later than December, or no earlier than ending on December 31st blank year, with all of our committee appointments and our appointments for staff or officers.
We've already established committee and board appointments don't have to be done at these organizations.
Right, but it's. Correct, but do we want to have four meetings in January? That's the question that we're ultimately getting.
Well, I don't understand why you couldn't just do board appointments at the first regular meeting in January.
So, we would wait till today?
Yeah.
And had 12 days of no clerk possibly, or no treasurer?
I'm not saying staff appointments. I'm saying board and committee appointments.
Well, do them all together ultimately is the point.
There's no, you already established, you don't have to.
Well, the, the point here is get them done. Why wouldn't you have done?
One, one week is not gonna, the sky isn't gonna fall. And it actually gives more people to apply, more people to review the candidates, more collaboration theoretically between us.
Well, then, so the meeting.
And who, who we think is the best pick.
Then, based on this law, set the date for the meeting on January 10th, if you still choose. Is the board still choosing the date, it's just giving flexibility to the board to choose the date, that's all this law is.
It's always for the organizational meeting, which is required, the appointments of certain staff.
Again.
And we've already established that boards and committees don't apply to that.
The idea is to consolidate meetings, so that we're not meeting four times in January, unless we have to for another special meeting.
Well, we wouldn't, how are you consolid, you're, you're going to have a board meeting at the first meeting of the regular meeting? Or you're still having it seven?
You're still going to have a regular meeting.
I'm meeting eight already, I'm in January right now.
There's no extra meetings.
Well, that's because you have extra.
Usually, it's three.
Right, usually would be three.
It'd still be three.
Well, this year it was four, that's the point, and so.
Well, because there was a special meeting.
It had to be four.
Well, but again, to meet, to meet that desire to get those appointments.
The special meeting didn't have to occur, because it's a special meeting.
Well, you, you're showing the idea that you don't work here daily, to understand the import of getting staffing in here. We have enough problems staffing two people up front, which is my ruling here because of safety.
And if you, if this is for the annual organizational meeting, which certain required staff have to be, by law, appointed, I understand that. What I'm saying is we already established, all that back and forth, that boards and committees that are appointed don't have to be done at the organizational meeting. So, I'm simply saying, we should do it at the first regular meeting, so that there's more than enough time to review all the candidates, because there was zero time to review anybody. And the whole list was basically dropped on people's heads. So, I, I kind of think.
I'm not sure what you mean by that, it was put out on December 31st, and.
The applications were issued to the trustees on the Thursday of the meeting.
No, no. Well, I'm sorry, because Jen was unfortunately out, but.
Right, because it was a holiday.
But I believe all.
And that's probably going to happen again, and again, and again, and again.
But two of the applicants ended up being people that had previously applied, we just asked them to do new committee, committee interest.
Well, yes, all but one.
So, so, can I jump in? Sure. A couple of thoughts, so, and Carla pointed this out, you try, you have started mentioning it, that the board at the last regular meeting in December of the prior official year, that's when they'll determine the date, the time, location, and the meeting. So, it won't, that eliminates some of the surprise, you know, to be more fresh in our mind, rather than doing that at the organizational meeting, which, you know, is a long time from year to year. But the other thing, though, too, going back to kind of some of the discussion we had at the other meetings, is that the law does not require or define what the agenda should or should not be for an organizational meeting. So, like, I hear what you're saying, but the law does not require that sort of, honestly, it doesn't require it, and it probably shouldn't. Each municipality should have some flexibility to structure their organizational meetings in a way that fits. some flexibility to structure their organizational meetings in a way that fits the municipality at a time. So I...
If I'm a town with a lot more staffing, maybe I'm not so concerned about this stuff. I'm a village here with limited staffing as it is, I get concerned about this stuff. That's got to be a stretch.
It's not that I'm not... As far as the staffing of village staff and employees, again, I'm just talking about boards and committees, which we already established, doesn't have to be done at the organizational meeting.
But if you're setting the meeting according to this at the last meeting in December, and we all say, hey, we're gonna do appointments then, it's not gonna be a surprise. So it's kind of eliminating that issue, I think.
Yeah. We don't want to keep getting into this, honestly. So this was an idea that basically reduced the acrimony moving forward, and we suggested we, when we realized the way the law read, this probably was an error in terms of the reality ultimately that this comes down to. So, yeah, trying to reduce the acrimony, and here we are. Now, the current motion in front of us is for a lead agency for... Resolution is for lead agency of seeker. She approved of the change of wording there. So at this point, let us go, I guess, roll call?
Well, I just wanted to address something, Bernadette, about no state requirements for what's in the organizational meeting. There are some state requirements. There's this New York Consolidated Law, those law, 3-312, filling of offices and vacancies by election or appointment. It said, number two, appointive offices shall be filled at the annual meeting immediately following the expiration of their terms, or in the case of newly established offices, at the time of their establishment. So appointive offices apparently need to be at the annual meeting, and then there's...
There's nothing precluding us from including appointments for other boards, though, I guess, is there?
Well, there are some requirements in the organizational...
There's also the wording about the immediately following the term is the other problem.
Right, yep, that's true.
And the term is December 31st.
Right, and then there's another law, Village Chapter 64, Article 4, subsection 4-400 or something, that says that, number one, the responsibility of the mayor to appoint one of the trustees as deputy mayor during the annual meeting. So there are some substantive content to the annual meeting. That occurred on January 2nd, by the way.
We're talking about moving forward, though. That's what we're gonna do.
So we should just understand, though, what is and isn't an organizational meeting, and what needs to happen to that. But you're right, Frank, it does say appointive offices shall be filled at the annual meeting following immediately following the expiration of their terms.
And that's the problem. We end up with an official year law and an organizational meeting law that didn't reflect that law well at all. So let's say, wait till the 6th to name a deputy mayor. And whose deputy mayor, God forbid, I am getting run over by a car? That's the conundrum again of trying to make sure we're not ending up in a problem. I'm trying not to, I'm trying my best not to. I do look both ways. We're crossing. While we go to the call on this part, you'll have another opportunity to talk on what will follow, which is the actual Senate public hearing. Roll call, please.
Trustee Raymond?
No.
Trustee Baskin?
I'll vote yes on this piece. Let's see what happens.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yes.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, that's 4-1, yes. So the resolution is approved. Now, I'll need a motion setting a public hearing for January 27, 2025, 7:01 PM related to proposed local law number one repealing and replacing section 45-9 of the Village of Voltsus Spa code for board trustees annual organizational meeting as follows. Section 45-9, board trustees annual organizational meeting. Annual organizational meeting of the board trustees shall be held at any time after the beginning of the official year and before the second Monday of the official year. At or before the last regular meeting in December of the prior official year, the village board shall determine the date, time, and location of the meeting. Absent a prior approved motion by the board trustees setting such meeting for a specific date, time, and/or available location, the mayor shall set the meeting for a date, time, and location as soon as practicable, with such date following the start of the official year. Such meeting shall be noticed pursuant to the requirements of the laws in the state of New York and shall be known as the, quote, "organizational meeting of the board trustees", end quote.
All right, motion.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yes.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. This is now to set the public hearing for this at the next meeting on the 27th, just to be clear for those that were wondering what I just said. Okay. I thought you were gonna say something else, so I'm pausing here, so...
So I still don't... Ideally, we would have a set date. I think the second Monday, or the first Monday of the year following years is not that far off in years, because we can't have a meeting on years of the day after and have everybody focused on that meeting. It's just, it's not reasonable, because the village is, it's a holiday period, and so once you start moving away from the holiday week, you might as well just have it a set day. And I don't see any advantage to having it constantly change one year to the next.
But that's not... Let's look back at the old law, back in the March-April scenario, just to get some insight as to how it was done. The official year started on a floating date, whereas the official year no longer floats, according to the law that we approved. So back when, election would be March 15-ish, I think the Tuesday of that week, whatever it was, right? And then a few weeks later, on the first Monday of April, would be the start of the official year, the date of oath, and the meeting for appointments to all appointments and organizational items as well. So, but that would float, because it's now based on the first Monday principle. The new official year law is January 1st at 12:01 AM or something along those lines, correct? Is it starting the official year thing? It might be noon, whatever it is, it's on January 1st, how much I can guarantee you based on reading.
I'm sorry, are you saying the official year used... The official year itself used to float, not just the meeting?
Yes, yes. It did. And I think that's...
So change that back, so required public reference, is what you're saying?
Well, no. Well, yes, in terms of election and going March April, we're not... That's not what you were saying. We're just looking back at the way it used to work, because I think the confusion you're having is that we didn't have, or we did have a set date for official year and the meeting of file and everything. No, we didn't. We had a day when it was supposed to happen, but not a day.
I don't understand the concept.
I don't think he did, though, because of the way you just said.
Yeah, I lost track of the fact that the year floated, not just the meeting.
The official year floated.
The term. To be more specific, the term floated. The year could be misleading, but...
Okay.
And why couldn't we just go back to that?
Interesting. So...
Because that seems so much simpler.
So it's a little bit advanced when you said, you know, it's an inconvenience to do it on the second day of, you know, January. I've been to organizational meetings on Year's Day on the second, so it's not uncommon to have it that way, but there's that line where it says the board can make that decision at that first, because the final meeting, which, final regular meeting, we normally only set one regular meeting for December, you can make that decision a month in advance, be like, hey, in your opinion, it's a holiday sort of season, people are still off. I don't necessarily think that, but we can say, okay, let's set it for whatever, you know, the Monday, the most convenient day for the rest of the board, but I think there's that flexibility where you're not necessarily... I don't know, I don't think it's that big of a difference.
It actually says at or before the last regular meeting. So it could be before the last regular meeting.
And the one thing I want to make sure I did here was, God forbid, we end up with another, you know, we notice it for the library, or we vote for the library type situation, something goes wrong at the library, we can't have it there. That way, the mayor has the ability to be like, okay, we'll have it here or somewhere else at that point, and we don't have to have a special meeting just to reset the location of the meeting itself, which is what ended up happening here this last go-around, because we noticed, or we voted a year earlier, apparently, to put it in the library, and the rules procedure had that as well, and the rules procedure, according to that motion a year earlier, controlled. And so we were stuck with a situation where it was supposed to be the library. I couldn't fix that independently based on the way the rules read even, so now we had to have a special meeting as well on the second to just make that change. With the new language, I can make that change, obviously with consultation with the board would be the hope here, to say, hey, we can't do it there, are you okay with it here, for instance? And so it just makes it a little bit more flexible for everybody to say if there's a problem on the line.
So, yeah, so just to add, there was a motion that's in the minutes from the last organizational meeting that says that the location can be changed if needed.
Right, but then the next line stated that when the rules of procedure and the organizational motion you're talking about differed, that the rules procedure controlled, and so that's where it got glitchy. And so to be technical, the rules procedure didn't give the flexibility, and the rules procedure was supposed to control in that situation. John's gonna be... I'm speaking lawyer language here, Jack Robinson's like, yeah, you're getting technical over here, Frank, but, you know, unfortunately, that was the conundrum I got put in, because I'm reading every, three things together, a motion, a rule procedure, and the statute at that point. And so that's why we need to make that fix, to have it here on the second ultimately, or on the sixth rather ultimately, so...
Yeah, and that was, at the time, I was wondering why we were having motions on the rules of procedure, separate from the rules of procedure, because you could have problems and redundancies and inconsistencies.
Well, but the rules of procedure needed to be fixed, that specific piece, and that was the only thing we changed in that meeting.
The part that makes me nervous about the mayor approving if the board doesn't approve is, you know, we don't have that in every motion. If the board doesn't, then the mayor does, it's just the board does it, period, and that's all.
It's a failsafe, guys. If you do it, I can't tell you.
But what I had is the experience from this year, where you forgot to tell Sean and myself that you were having a meeting on January 2nd. At the last minute, the clerk said, as a reminder, we're having a meeting on Thursday, that was Monday afternoon, after the public notice had gone in that there was a meeting. So we weren't even notified of the date of the meeting until after the public.
Right, but we were pretty nimble. We were pretty nimble to get things re-noticed, to get things handled once we pointed out.
He had to reschedule work. So anyways, that's an experience.
But then you locked anyone.
That's an experience that happened, was in a highly partisan atmosphere, some people may not be told there's an organizational meeting coming up in a couple of days. So I just... And then the other piece is, we make, we vote on things all the time between meetings, whether we're supposed to or not, I don't know.
No, you do not.
We do that all the time.
No, you do not.
How many times have we gotten an email asking, can we get a vote permission for this or that?
You get a consensus, and then we're supposed to ratify, yeah, in the next meeting if it's an emergency.
So even, so, all right, so if it's not an official vote, although sometimes it is...
It's not a vote. Please.
The, we could still have that in our, in the motion, that we can determine a meeting, it may not be a vote, but let the board determine the meeting. Even if we miss for some reason, it's not on the agenda, why not have the board, you poll the board and we...
I think that's built in here, Ben, that I...
Well, I don't understand the additional language. All I should say is by resolution of the board, period.
Well, at this point, any other discussion, okay? And is there any desire to change anything by motion?
Just telling the hearing.
Okay.
Well, but you're saying the hearing based on the language.
Yeah.
So we're locked into this motion then at that point. We'll do a roll call.
Trustee Raymond?
No.
Trustee Baskin?
I'm gonna say no, so that it's not held over me as being a hypocrite for everything I've said before, and my concerns that I've voiced.
Trustee Fandanza?
Yes.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, 3-2, motion carries. It was good, vibrant discussion at least, I mean...
That's true.
Can I get a motion? Okay. Yes, can I get a resolution? I'm getting there. Can I get a resolution?
I sent it to you. It's good.
I'm aware, I'm trying to find it. You know, emails I get a day.
Resolution to declare the board lead agency for local law two of 2025.
What'd she say again?
So moved.
Trustee Fandanza?
I'll say yes.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. Okay, for those wondering what this is, just to be clear, the law being changed here is related to water and sewer billing. What especially happened in the February billing period, because bills will be going out on around February 1st, the language in the statute read 30 days. The intention and the way software is lined up and everything else in a perfect world is that on the 1st of the next month, penalties could be incurred, and that was the presumption. Okay? Yeah? So Bob Kavanaugh has, you know, had an issue with the fact that, you know, we abide by the law on the 30 days, because he's the one that's basically sitting there getting penalties ready, the billing ready, and everything else, and this has been a kind of a long time coming. Finally, we said, let's get this done, and we'll have it in place for this go-around. So what this does is essentially says, okay, you have to pay by 25 days, or the last day of the month is issued, whichever is later. So essentially, if we get the bill out on February 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, then it's due on February 28th, and the penalties will be incurred on March 1st. So we start with natural months again, and just gets rid of an anomaly that's been a little bit vexing about how we apply those penalties, and the public has confusion left, right, and center about the way their bill reads all the time. It just eliminates a big problem that we've run into over these years. Okay. Anybody have any discussion beyond that? Okay, it looks like we have general consensus, so I'll just go for a voice vote here. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries to the resolution, carries. Okay, now, can I get a motion setting a public hearing for January 27, 2025, at 7:03 PM related to proposed local law number two, amending chapter 200 of the Village of Voltsus Spa code in following manners. One, repealing and replacing section 200-21b1 with the following language. If a water bill is paid within the first 25 days of the date of the bill, or by the last day of the month in which it is issued, whichever is later, the bill amount is due. B, repealing and replacing section 200-37e with the following language. The bills and any penalties for not hitting for sanitary sewage services shall be rendered and collected in the same manner and at the same time as is presently provided for the rendition and collection of water bills in section 200-21 above. And C, repealing section 200-37f in its entirety. Just as a note, a side note, that section laid out the same penalty structure as the water section had, and so we're trying to consolidate how that works between the water and sewer pieces of the code there with a 1% per month type of situation and all of that, just to be clear on that. Can I get a motion? Trustee Fandanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we continue. Can I get a motion approving attached change order number 002, amending the agreement between the Village of Voltsus Spa and Pankoff General Contractors resulting in a $750 credit to the village? Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Fandanza, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And again, motion approving the attached change order number 003, amending the agreement between the Village of Voltsus Spa and Pankoff General Contractors for extra excavating fabric and stone for foundation work priced at $2,334 extra.
I like the motion.
Trustee Baskin?
I'll say yes.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
Foundation work?
For, I believe, the new piece, you have the foundation. I think you're trying to fortify it better, is my guess. Christine, any knowledge on that one?
It's had to do with exposure of... It's had to do with exposure of, it is the foundation for the new additions and also some exposure of the, the foundation of the library, you know, so that they, they found that they had to do addition work on.
All in favor?
I have, no, I just have a question. Is it possible to condense these?
No, because technically, change order has to stand on its own.
For each one?
Yeah, so.
And one other thing, we do understand, I'm sorry, that all of these, these change orders and all of this, it's all, it's all coming out of the grant. Okay? So there's money for, sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you for saying that. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving change order number 004, amending the agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and Pankoff General Contractors for fur, drywall, and paint for the existing north wall at the lower level, priced at $1,377.84 extra? Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Baskin? Discussion.
Fur?
Yeah, I didn't write it there. I looked twice, too. I don't write it, I just...
Fur, I think, is in the description.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're being animal friendly, don't worry, we're not actually...
Either, oh, okay.
Yeah. Can I get a motion?
Yes, yes.
Can I get a motion approving the change order, the attached change order, amending the agreement between the Village of Boston Spa and the Zone Plumbing and Heating for addition of rectangular ductwork, which will add needed connections and offsets priced at $1,661 extra. Again, this is based on the library for those ones. Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Von Dainsa? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached agreement between Brookside Museum and the Village of Boston Spa and authorizing the mayor to execute it?
I want a motion.
Trustee Baskin?
I'll second.
Trustee Von Dainsa? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the following policy related to the health reimbursement account deductible usage for employees that are members of the Teamsters Healthcare Plan? Quote, HRA cards we credit 25% of the annual deductible for which the village may be responsible for on January 1st, April 1st, July 1st, and October 1st of each year. Employees who need to use in excess of the credited amount must place their request in writing for review by the village before additional deductible will be credited. Part-time employees who have achieved retired full-time status with the village and as such receive health benefits as part of their retirement from the village will automatically be approved for such a request as the board trustees determines there to be minimal risk of potential abuse deductible usage in such cases. Trustee Von Dainsa? Trustee Price Bush? Discussion. To be clear on this one, just for those wondering, we had a police officer who's now part-time that achieved full-time status, or that achieved retired status rather, and gets his healthcare through that, but because he's a part-timer, he qualifies with the Teamsters plan. The conundrum comes here because, you know, he and his wife both need to use health services early and often during the year, so this is a great healthcare plan for them, this whole thing. But obviously, we're not worried about them, him just quitting or anything like that, or any other part-timer that, you know, achieved retired status, and also there's going to be a certain latitude given by the union with respect to timing of, you know, cutting them off from that probably to the end of that year anyway. The concern more is that an employee, full-time employee that comes in and then uses all the services and then leaves in January because, you know, they got their full $5,000 for family or whatever it is. So we're trying to balance here, and we discussed it with our HRA company. They said, well, do you want to do it monthly? Monthly seemed to be a little bit of an administrative headache to do that. Do you want to do it every six months? Six months seemed to be a little bit risky because of what I just brought up in terms of you don't want people to quit and have already absorbed all the deductible. So quarterly was what they had recommended based on the concerns on both sides of that. We also just wanted to build in kind of the automatic yes for that part-time scenario that I described, because there's a couple of people that might apply to, especially in our police department, that are sustaining part-time hours that are retired under our system here in the village. That's, to be clear, and we also need to make a policy to be consistent in this. You're all looking at the screen like there's something going on here.
You look at the screens, I look at the screens.
I look at everyone.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, sorry.
Trustee, I have, no, thank you for that explanation. Sentence I had a question about was, employees who need to use in excess of the credited amount must place their requests in writing for review by the village. So how's that, like, who reviews that? Who judges whether to pay that out?
Yeah, it's somewhere between HR and those who obviously handle payroll requests in the first place or handle the financial aspects of it. So it would be basically internal. I mean, Terry, Terry, would you be handling, oh, I was like, Terry, would you be handling those types of requests directly?
Yes.
Okay, so, and then if it's, you know, approved with no concern, at the mayor level, I guess I would probably be the person to give the final sign-off on it internally. And I'm not going to be saying no to these things, Ben, that's not the idea, but obviously, again, we don't want it abused, so that's why we have to put a little bit of a stopper on this to make sure that it's not everybody going for the $5,000 in January type of approach.
Well, I understand, but just, you know, question is, like, what are the criteria for review, you know, that could put the clerk in an uncomfortable place?
Right, but she can always come to the board, too, if she wants approval.
Then do we add, like, HIPAA issues with...
Well, we would have to go probably into an executive session to discuss those specifically. So that's, we want to avoid having to do that at a time, but if there's a case where there's a concern about flight of employee after usage, obviously, she can bring it to the board and get it approved. Okay?
Is this done in other places, or the board, or the HR?
I have no idea. I've not seen it before. Usually, this stuff doesn't come to board level. It's all internally, so I don't think...
Yeah, so I think the point there is that usually, you don't elevate it to the level of usually handle it behind the scenes and, you know, work with the employee directly.
It's a benefit analyst.
Yeah.
You just want it to be consistent, obviously, from one employee to the next.
And that's why we're gonna approve your policy generally. They told us that we needed to approve a policy just to even get that part-time language in there, you know, at the end of it there. So I figured we might as well get the full policy into this with how we're gonna credit it and all that stuff, too, so that it's clear to everybody how it'll work. I did talk to Teamsters leads on this, and they understood the concept and the intent of doing quarterly, and they had no issue with that as well. So just to be clear, we were pretty comprehensive on how we reviewed that.
Yeah, no, I meant, review needs to be consistent, each specific, and I'm wondering if we need something about an appeal. I don't know how much money we're talking about, this is...
For individual, I think it's $2,500, their balance, for family, plan $5,000. So basically, you're gonna have the automatic rate of $1,250 on family plan or $6.25 as an individual. So it's not, it's not a heap of money, but obviously, you don't want everybody, his brother, taking the $5,000 in January, and then you have the risk that they need to stay all year, or it'd be worth it. It's insane. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm okay with what you put forward so far, but can we work on fleshing out what a review means to some degree?
What would your proposed language be, so if you're asking?
Oh, I don't know. It would be, you know, a health policy professional ideally, but, and also, there would be an opportunity for an appeal if, you know, that's typical, you know, these things.
Possibly created...
Well, why would you send, add a sentence if, and we'll have to go back to approved in a second here, or it was, in America, something like, appeals for denial can be taken to the board trustees who will evaluate in executive session.
All right, and do we want to say, it says by the village, which is very vague, do we want to be more specific about the HR officer, or, I mean, it could be a DPW guy?
Part of it is Frank, too, so I don't know.
In writing for review by the, what do you think, Carla? Do you think there should be more specific, or does it have to be?
It can be if you want it to be. You can put clerk and/or mayor.
So change word for which the village clerk and/or mayor, or they're responsible for, or actually, reviewed by the village clerk and/or mayor for annual additional deductible, that's where, yeah, okay.
And the clerk is in this capacity, what, the HR?
Yeah.
What is their title for HR?
Title of HR.
Title of HR? I put that in, just to make it clear.
So, to be, to be clear, those were two changes. Do you accept both of those changes? Mayor, do you accept both of those changes? Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to purchase one VCOM 78 fiberglass filter for the Village of Boston Spa pool as detailed on quote number SM051424-A0 from Miami Filter to match existing elevations, including freight to destination? Freight for $17,988, no sense, which is deemed to be the lowest quote from pre-suppliers and authorizing the mayor to execute any work related to such purpose. Trustee Von Dainsa?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion. Kudos to Scott Kearns and to Jennifer Moskowitz for working hard to get us these quotes reissued and making sure that ultimately we have one that's under $20,000 because pyramid rules or purchasing rules. And so that we luckily got those in time for Friday, because we didn't have to do a late add-on on this. But this is a cool filter that honestly should have been probably for two years now, and finally, we're gonna get this thing in and get it installed by our own folks as quickly as possible.
And this is the one they wanted, that matched?
Yes, it is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the plan and configuration.
Bingo, you got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to have the mayor's office provide a spreadsheet showing the cost of the new DPW pay structure stipends calculated, including subtotals for each line item?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Raymond, discussion.
This motion doesn't specify to who.
See that again a lot because I think my...
This motion doesn't specify to whom you're issuing that.
Okay.
Oh, well, right, so it's to the board. But, you know, ideally, all right, go ahead, and what?
Well, just, you know, it's, it's information about people's salaries, so I think there should be some...
Well, I think the concern from the village's attorney was that it included methodology of reviving of salaries, was that what your concern was?
Right, as public officials, the salaries are foillable, and you can give your salary. You can get salaries, and you cannot get the negotiations or the calculations with the methodology and how you get the salaries.
Right, so that's why we couldn't share the spreadsheet you shared with us, with the public. But this is just the calculation of, of how you reach the $81,000 total. Doesn't even have to include people's names or anything, but...
Well, that would be methodology, et cetera, wouldn't it? I'm not gonna try to be difficult.
So that could come to the board, you know, confidentiality, confidentially, right?
Problem.
Board can get whatever it wants, as long as the board doesn't provide it to folks in violation of foil or any, any at all.
Yeah, because at one point, Ben, I think you had said as part of the motion, once spreadsheet be publicly disseminated and all that, so I get this confusion here.
Yes, because I thought that after we voted on it, it was public. It's actually a point of information is, all right, so we voted on your motion, and you guys passed it, and now it is, is being negotiated or with the Teamsters? Is that what's happening? So it's not, what's, what's happening?
Yeah, that will, so I'll finish the actual final product, but the MOU was approved, amended MOU was approved, yeah.
So that amended MOU has been approved?
By the board, yeah.
No, 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 by, but you're still negotiating that with the Teamsters?
The MOU was approved by the board, so we, just, just give clear timeline for this one. Back earlier last year, we had approved an MOU. Then, after superintendent had announced retirement, we later on, in December, I think it was, or whenever it was at that point, approved, yeah, it was the last summer meeting thing, approved the last regular meeting in December, approved the amended MOU based on salary changes and, and all that stuff that was going on. Now, we have to finish the actual final agreement.
Right.
Because the superintendent had retired before we had finished that agreement, it sort of threw back open, although it could have even been, the final agreement was approved, threw back open, discussion about how to handle that, those aspects of it. So the timing was pretty much, as we're trying to finalize the full agreement with some of the new shit that doesn't get, you know, put into the MOU, minor changes we had made, some order meter errors that we found and all that stuff, we have to go through this agreement with fine tooth comb. It basically stopped us dead in our tracks because now we've got another problem to address, and that's why we went to the amended MOU. Now, again, we're going back through one more time to make sure we got everything right, and hopefully, in the next few weeks, we'll have the final agreement to approve. Does that make sense?
Yes, once that agreement's approved, then everything's public?
No. The work product to achieve it is never public according to what Carla said.
So the, the motion that you said verbally at the last meeting basically summarized the chart. It said $10,000 for this position, $8,500 for that position, and, you know, certain positions go up like $250 an hour and others go up by $150 an hour. So it was all verbalized publicly?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't understand why the, the piece of paper that it was, your verbalization was based on is private when everything on that paper was made public.
I'm just going by what attorney tells me to do or not do. So one of the, one of the criticisms you had back then, just to be clear, is that I sprang out on you at the last minute, no, actually, I'm required to go into executive session with that document if I'm going to provide that document. I should have collected it for me, technically, yeah, actually, and that was my mistake not doing that, but it didn't change the nature of it being public or not, because it shouldn't be disseminated by the board at that point in time, but our protection or legally we collected. I am obligated to do it the way that was done. You decided to make it into a big problem ultimately for us, and I'm trying to tell you in different ways, I had to do it that way. I tried to clue Sean in, afraid that, you know, one night, just a little bit of what was going on, maybe a little back and forth, and I looked into what you had been saying about whether it was written to law or not, it wasn't, I, you know, I asked Carla to put me on that, so...
Well, actually, my state that there's multitude of areas in the law where it refers to the DPW superintendent.
And also refers to street superintendent, we technically don't have denoted it here, too. So the code, the code probably needs to have a little bit more flexibility across the board, not just there. Anyway...
I mean, just for, you could have waited a week for us to deliberate as a body confidential, confidentially. Why is it that other, when we're in executive session, for other issues, we can receive confidential papers ahead of time, but not for this particular issue?
I'm not sure of an occasion that you're even...
We have, we have received contracts, for example, that we've discussed, I'm sure we've received drafts ahead of executive sessions.
I know the attorney provided stuff before an executive session.
Yeah, but not, not on labor negotiation stuff, that, that's a little bit more strongly controlled.
So Carla, is that true? You cannot, when can you share with the, because it obviously puts the whole board at a great disadvantage when they are not able to look at things ahead of a meeting where a decision is about to be made. So sometimes confidential information can be shared ahead of the executive session so that we can consider it and bring it to the executive session, then other times, is it true that we can't receive confidential information ahead of time? We have to wait until the meeting?
Well, I'm not your labor attorney, so I can't answer the question on your labor, and if you have other, I'm happy to look into the rest of it.
So Frank just said that you said that, that he couldn't share that document ahead of time.
Frank didn't say that I said that.
Yes.
No, he's not. But my question to you, though, is the motion is to provide a spreadsheet.
So there's, so you can't talk to the...
I'm not labor counsel.
All right, because, you know, there was a statement made by Frank on Facebook that according to our village attorney, so I guess you meant the labor attorney. You said, you're not allowed to provide that spreadsheet before it's exercised according to our village attorney.
It is best practice when we are labor counsel to every other municipality that we're labor counsel to, including all the counties and the school districts in the area, that we do not have the clients provide, the head, the mayor, the superintendent, whoever provide on board with any information prior to the executive session, perhaps conversations, but nothing in writing. It's then disseminated, the attorney normally creates it, so the attorney then brings it, the attorney disseminates it, the attorney retrieves it. It's never given to the public.
In that meeting, though, Carl was not here because of the weather that occurred, so we had to sort of modify the approach, and so that's...
And I'm not labor counsel, so I didn't create any of the documents.
So you didn't create the doc, Frank created the documents, I believe.
I know nothing about it, I'm not counsel.
Right, so it seems like a reasonable request to, to look at the numbers that are part of the new structure, and it seems like it could be done without, without sharing, you know, personal information, you know...
If I could just make a couple of chases, what's the concern, what are you looking for exactly? Because I'm not even sure what this is trying to get. Yeah, because I could sit here and tell you everybody, except for three people got two-fifty raised, a word about what was already in the MOU. Three people got one-fifties, those three people got stipends for leadership, I don't even finish what I can. And Jennifer was gonna put down also for five thousand dollar stipend because she can't take on more of the DBW administrator role as well. So that is in a nutshell what it was.
So, yeah, so the only other step, and you must have done this already anyway, is you said it all equals eighty-one thousand, and I just hoping to see how you got eighty-one thousand.
Projecting at that point in time.
Well, not just like on a piece of paper.
Right, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain you so that, I don't know why you don't want me to say it out loud. I'm not naming names, I'm gonna at least give you just the general way you approach something like this from my, my seat, okay? Allow me to say it.
All right.
Basically, you take employee X, you look at base, you look at overtime that they had worked to that point, you know, historically from your knowledge of it. You apply the two-fifty or the one-fifty, depending on who it is, to the base two-thousand-eighty hours. You apply, you know, three-seventy-five or two-twenty-five, depending on the overtime number, you know, if it's one fifty-two-fifty base, to the number of overtime hours you project that they're gonna have, add it all up, put the total there. Do that for all ten employees, whether we had them or not at that point, but we did, and add them up, and then throw in the extra five thousand there, and all that, those numbers add up with the stipends included to eighty-one thousand dollars and change, I think it was.
So you've already done the work. Can you please share your work?
Well, that's the ultimate question that's being asked is, do I show the methodology and work? I don't know. And so when a question like that comes up, I say, hey, Carla, or hey, Lane, what do I do? And so that will be the question. But I, you asked us to put this on kind of, you know, out of nowhere last week, we had a few other things we gotta worry about around here last week, and so I didn't get a chance to call Lane about that. I mean, we just got the handbook over to her the other day too. So we're throwing a few things at her once right now. If you'd like me to get her opinion on it, we'll go down to the table until twenty-seventh, but it's up to you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And can you get it? It'd be great if you get it in writing. I mean, part of it is not just what is it gonna cost this year, but, you know, years going forward. It would be helpful to know.
Well, I don't know how it would change years going forward. The idea, the other thing that was built in was two-and-a-half percent for a year on that portion of it, which would have been the likely raise for the superintendent position too. So it would still basically use the same amount that was going to be budgeted each year from our historical view of how we inflate wages around here. So that was built into it too. That was part of the.
Sure, any annual increase is part of the Teamsters contract.
It would be, there was a specific number for each employee each year. Then this additional stuff was basically two-and-a-half percent each year, this additional stuff. So that's what I would do. I would layer on at the numbers, so. Okay, what do you want, what do you want me, what would you like me to do with this?
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate your offer. Yes, I'm rolling the table. If you, can you ask the labor attorney if this is something that we could see on paper, just confidentially among the board?
I can thank her for her first gift to us all too, when I call her, so.
The chocolate?
Yeah, that's very nice.
Yeah, the.
Carla doesn't give us chocolate, she says. She gives us quality service at low rates. Merry Christmas thoughts. Okay, so is that a motion to the table?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's just one information point that I wish we had before we talked about or voted on it, but yes, thank you.
Well, is a, okay, can I get a second for that? Trustee, okay, so trustee Baskin, trustee Vaden's on the motion to the table, no discussion on any motion to the table, it's an immediate motion for vote, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries to the table. Here's announcements. Let's see here. Just gonna review some of the things I actually wrote about this weekend on Facebook to sort of give folks an indication of some of the projects we're working on, where we're going with them, what needs to be done, et cetera, because a lot of people that, you know, asked about this stuff, and probably a good time to do this right now. We are still working to get the cell equipment off of John Street Tower, to get the John Street Tower exterior and interior done as soon as possible. Again, the work is probably gonna be done in a two-step process, the interior first, because obviously we help safety issues that come with any minuscule amounts of blood that was still denoted from the attempt to get it off twenty-eight years ago, or whatever it was. So that's gonna be the first step, also getting the cell tower into a temporary pole position, and then a remobilization either later next year, so the aim is springtime of twenty-twenty-five for the interior work. Fall of twenty-twenty-five or spring of twenty-twenty-six would be the exterior work to, you know, make it look a little bit more presentable out there. In the meantime, and if approved down the line, there's work being done to get approvals for one-hundred-eighty-foot monopole that would not be connected to the tower. I know somebody had confusion on Facebook this weekend about this. It will actually not be on the tower, it'll be in St. Hersel, but it will be off the tower, and that means that the equipment will not have to be touching the tower, you know, risk the interior, exterior, or whatever. This became important, I don't know if you realize, but I guess the town of Austin made a kind of slight call in their reservoir recently, and by that happening without the cell equipment on it, they can go in and go attack that problem right away. Whereas if the cell could have remained on it, it would have been a bigger issue because who knows what would need to come down immediately, and good luck getting the cell carriers to cooperate that quickly. So we've had a good amount of participation by all the cell carriers. T-Mobile had reached it back out, wondering when they could go back on, and I'm like, I think you need to go participate with the other carriers on this monopole idea. They will all be above the current height they currently are on. So the top one right now is around ninety-ish feet, I think, if we're taking, everybody's gonna be like one-seventy, one-sixty, one-fifty, one-forty with the four carriers we have up there, and that gets you beyond the trees, which is why, as we've said before, cell service going in certain directions is problematic on that tower right now. So we look to improve cell service throughout the community in Milton and in the village. We look to, for a safer result on this by not having equipment in or on our tower, and they're going to pay for the differential for any remobilization costs the carriers are down the line, knowing that they're kind of causing this in their timeframe. Carla and I have been working with one of the attorneys for, I think, Verizon, who's helping to kind of usher in design and approach on this and regulatory stuff, and we're gonna continue to move that down the pipe until we reach a point where we need to come back to the board to talk about this a little bit further. But I could tell consensus-wise in the past, you generally feel good about that because you're really gonna go for that corral at the top, which was not gonna be cheap, or this is still not cheap, and we'll have to figure out what the math is with contracts and everything else. But it seems to get everybody a win-win with the service and with the safety down the line. Anybody want to give me any thoughts on this approach or?
I don't think any.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I guess my only concern is how does the property events work? If it's on our property, but it's their fault.
Good question. It's gonna be probably our poll when it's all said and done. And so this is how the calculus is gonna get affected with the contracts down the line. So they're gonna give us something that has value in it, and so we could go sell that technically if we wanted to, which is not uncommon. We always get hit up. To sell our Rowland Street pole that we have over there, I've never bitten on that because that is so close to our water source, let alone, you know, the reservoir, the power there, that I think that's more of a risk to let somebody have that level. Now, sure, when an emergency occurs, we can break glass if we need financial support like that, there's always going to be someone willing to buy that, right? But for now, I've never entertained that. But in the same light, there are many people that are willing to buy this, you know, pole with the leases on it and everything else. So that's a conversation we can have at a later date. If we wanna hold on to the pole and, you know, do the whole payback mechanism inside those contracts, or how we approach it. That's another conversation that would be had in this whole process, and Carla's aware of that, we're gonna be moving that forward too. But to answer your question, we will be the owner most likely of that pole when it's all said and done.
So, but we won't have any maintenance response to that?
Correct. That, that'll be part of the agreement and everything else too, so. We'll, we'll get into the minutia on that down the line, but good question. I just wanted to be clear that, you know, one of the reasons why we're not gonna have the same level as normal of a planning and zoning approach is because it'll probably, probably be a village project, still need to do seaker in that scenario, but it wouldn't be, you know, having to go quit planning for a second. And John, I saw the HDC was asked to render an opinion, and I appreciated that you found there's no historical significant effects on it. In fact, you applauded the idea of making us technologically ready for 5G service, et cetera, you know, around the entire area. That would be an advantage, and I hope that you were even aware of how much higher this will be and how much it'll improve service even when you issued that letter. So I appreciate seeing that letter too, so thank you for that.
I just, one other question. Has there been any conceptuals as far as the aesthetic?
Not currently. Apparently, I talked about the old big tree stuff that, you know, we've.
Frank did one?
Yeah, whatever it is, they said it's just not worth it in this day and age either. The only real concern for height was the airport, proximity to airport, but they looked into that quickly to make sure, yeah, that that was not gonna have a runway impact or something like that approach impact. I don't believe it does. Go ahead.
One of the reasons we were thankful about this because the tower will be visible. Its visibility indicates this community, hopefully it's technically advanced, is has the connections that people will want. Like the nature of being able to work from home and have a good.
I can attest that when I'm over there, my Verizon services 5G, UW, Ultra Wi-Fi hand over there, so if they're just gonna move what's on the John Street Tower to this new monopole, yes, it will be technologically advanced.
Good for the town of the hill.
Yep.
I think it'll help a lot in Colonial Hills, we've had residents.
Oh, yeah.
But I've talked to that, say, their cell service is not great.
A hundred percent.
So I'm, I know they'll be excited about that.
Now, on the flip side of all this, to get the John Street Tower ready, we need to get the Colonial Hills power ready, and Scott Burns and the company are working right now to, with Lobella, to get the correct equipment to get that re-engaged over the next couple of months. So there may be some expenses that come with that, but obviously it's a necessity to get a water tower intact and working. See Los Angeles for more details right now, what can go wrong if you don't have that kind of planning. So we're making sure that we are ready to go, have our storage in place, have the sufficient capacity we need to serve customers and serve emergencies as well. So understand that also that if, God forbid, something really bad happens, we could refill the John Street Tower pretty quickly if need be, but the, you know, let's pray that we never end up with a situation like Los Angeles is in vacation right now, for sure. But it's something that, you know, as this was happening the last couple of weeks, you think about, you start asking questions, are we okay in that realm? Maybe we would be okay. We just gotta make sure that the Colonial Hills power is good to go, and that's what we're working on right now, so that we're not making any mistakes down the line. Okay, there's that. Let's see. DBW Garage Building, we are working to revise plans. We received plans that were an eight-million-dollar idea and a four-to-five million dollars. I have talked to Don Rhodes at La Berge, who has worked with us on water stuff before, and he was telling me how he had recently done a pole barn approach, obviously more fortified in the dormitory area of the DBW building and other places, sent me a design that was recently built. And so actually tomorrow, I'm gonna be sitting down with Lobella to talk about revising the four-to-five-million-dollar plan, maybe something a little bit larger, but in more of a pole barn, pole barn approach on that parcel. There was also a discussion, I know, with Jason Miller and the town of Milton about their timing on their garage emptying out because of their new garage, and the town of Milton apparently is open to discussing allowing us to utilize their garage temporarily, the existing one, when they're moving out, to help us buy some time to operate in Milton while that's being rebuilt here on Charlton Street. So there's a reason I want to reengage that discussion as soon as possible so that we can figure out the right plan, the right approach budgetarily, and also the right place to get us remobilized if necessary. So that's happening. Like I said, we'll have that discussion tomorrow as well, so stay tuned for more on that. Also, we're gonna talk about the court building approach and, you know, ideas because unfortunately, it's gonna cost probably more to renovate that building, especially with the flood we recently had in the police side, the old police side of the building, and then it would, in terms of just value of that parcel at this point. And so we're investigating possible ideas for maybe sale-leaseback approach, people like that to talk to the board about. But first, I've gotta come up with a game plan as to who's gonna design what, how, who would be paying what, how, you know, the way to legally handle all these things. So I have more to report at a later date on it, but Thirty Bath Street is a bigger issue now with that flood that had occurred, luckily not in the court section, but it magnifies why we need to start to maybe consider what we're doing there because there's already a mess with the building and it's just not getting any better over there.
Is consolidated courts involved with approval of design and stuff like that, or?
Yes, although with those courts, it's a little less rigid, but also Steve Bolger and I had talked the other day, county administrator, because in the past, he said that OCA, we needed to utilize one of their courtrooms in the interim, would need to approve that. And so I think it's JD Four that is in the State Farm complex currently. He's, you reach out to them, they're, they don't normally do it, but they're open to discussing it, and so he and I are at some point in the future going to have that discussion with the JD Four folks from OCA to see what we can do to tie us over on that as well. So again, stay tuned, we'll have more on that, but I'm trying to figure out, you know, what the timing would have to look like, what we could do in the interim and everything else, and then get that thing looking right and maybe get some committee and board meeting space because we realize with the library out of commission, just how in need we are from time to time of good space to meet in. We can't always rely on the Cornell building or the library for that matter all the time, so having an alternative location might be useful as well. We got related to the half-million dollars that were in the federal budget for, for Congressman Taco in community development part of what he's, you know, what we applied for last year, we said three, three-quarters million dollars. They got us into the budget at a half-million-dollar number. That could still go up from there, who knows? But obviously with the federal budget issues, they updated us that it didn't get any approvals yet, but this is historically not a problem, that every rendition of a budget has always had community development money in it. So it's just more of a question probably of when, not if, but they did update us on that, and so there will be more to be said about that down the line. But we appreciated the fact that they even got us to this level or this close to the finish line with a half-million dollars of money in the federal budget for sidewalk improvements, and also possibly redway mapping that goes with it for cases where we don't have, you know, good mapping on us and redway locally. So thanks again to Congressman Taco and his office for their transparency with what happened there. Milton Ave sidewalks. As you know, we've eliminated trees. We had hoped to stump by now, but obviously with the way the snow has refused to stop falling, you saw the additional salt we just bought right after, what, a month and a half ago, buying more salt. This has been that kind of winter. And so eventually, we will get to stumping and derouting as much as we can. We've already been in contact with National Grid. There is a gas line that goes down that side of Milton Avenue, and there is a fear that we have roots that have wrapped badly so around possibly the gas service there. So we're gonna work in coordination with Grid when we get to that point, but we also will come up with a plan for the merchants to the degree that it might take a little bit longer to get all those roots out of there and everything else, because obviously you don't wanna leave too much carcass of tree underground because that destabilizes the sidewalk later on too. And then, as you probably have heard, carpentry will be working, continuing on the trees, types of trees to use to replace the divots. We will put in tree boxes in all the segments of sidewalk where there were trees, and then we'll work on getting the right stuff into those locations as well. And then we'll rinse and repeat. We have South Street, fall twenty-twenty-five, spring twenty-twenty-six. Woodfall Park. We are, I've got to get back to Caitlin, but we're gonna be meeting with Jeff Anthony again over at Studio A either this week or next week to continue pushing forward with gazebo stuff and also finalizing some stuff on the pathway. Been talking to some folks about some approaches with respect. Been talking to some folks about some approaches with respect to the pathway that might reduce costs. And we've got to talk to Jeff a little bit more about some of those aspects too, to see what he recommends in that. And also Carla about what our latitudes are with certain things with how we create this project, the stages we do it in, how it would have to be contracted out, et cetera. So there's legal interplay, there's design interplay, et cetera, that's coming up with that. But we're working to try to minimize costs and Caitlin and I are in frequent communication about it. And Jeff is finishing up plans as well. I have a big, a large bid document I've been meaning to get to you. But so it may be irrelevant if we go a certain way on things down the line, but I will get that to you. Remind me if I don't like tomorrow. If you remind me, I had that, so our holidays are not giving that today.
Frank, would you mind letting me know when you're meeting so I might be able to attend if that it based my schedules, Park and Tree?
Sure, I think it was supposed to be this week, but again, I haven't talked to her, so it may go to next week. So I'll let you know.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let's see. Carla, parking schedule, what, what is your timing on that in terms of getting it for us for votes that we can start making the next steps?
Yep, we have, we have all the information we need. We just need to put it in a schedule form. So I'm having Alex put that in the schedule form.
Alex has in.
Who lives.
Yeah.
And trying to get her more involved since she's a community member here too. And our hope is to have that to the board next week to review. Don't know if the board is going to want to vote on it on the 27th. They can't, they want to. It's really just, I had the chief go around and, and tell me where the no parking are, where the handicap parks are. So we can create, if you recall, you create, we're creating the schedule so we didn't include in the law. You include it as a resolution so you can make the resolution so you can, you can change them easier. So I finally have all that information and we're just going to put it in form. So I think I can get it done next, issue next week, you can review it and it's really, it's just factual.
That's going to be helpful on a couple of different lines. First, it allows us to finally get a PEO to apply parking tickets without the driver present. Because VNT law that we would be able to issue tickets on right now has two downfalls. One, driver has to be present. Actually, I have to give it to the human. You can't place it to the windshield. Two, state gets the money. And so we want our own code so we can collect our own revenue on this stuff. Not that we're looking to make, you know, a lot, but we want to be able to pay a PEO and have kind of a revenue neutral scenario with that. So that's why we are waiting here to get that. And why, when people ask, why aren't you ticketing that car that's over there? We can't. Or if we do, it's not going to stand up type of situation. So there's one. Two, we want to get everything we currently have in our inventory of signage and rules into the schedule. And then we can modify as we indicate what we need to do. Going to be getting a parking, downtown parking committee together here at some point to discuss some of the things that have been failing in that respect. Or what we need more inventory of in terms of types of parking spaces. Is paid parking an idea at all at any point with a couple of meter spaces or something along those lines? Just different things to approach. What people feel is, I think, an inadequacy of parking, maybe not a shortage of it. Because at BOA last week, if you want to say what was presented.
Basically at our BOA, we had some, basically a market study and just a study on the whole, our village. And, and they themselves, which is shocking, said we have adequate, more than adequate parking between public and private lots and streets spots. So we just have to probably allocate it better and kind of, you know, start getting people to turn over those spots more on.
But, you know, merchants have some definite thoughts, folks that shop around here, visit around here, have some definite thoughts. You know, folks who are handicapped that need more handicap parking have some thoughts about what we do well or don't do well around here. And so it's, it's an opportunity, I think, to reevaluate what was done five years ago, do you ever think, I think it was four or five years ago? To just, you know, maybe six years ago, I think it may have been 2019 or something like that. But whatever it was, the last time the code was changed, even the person that had led some of the writing of it was criticizing some of it at a plane war game last week, for instance. And it was like, well, this is the code where we have to adhere to for now. So, you know, we'll get to changes at a certain point here. It's just first, let's get our code that we didn't even have, our, you know, you know, parking ticket code in and effective with the schedule, and then we'll go to the next steps of everything so that we're complete here. Health plan, as you heard from the HRA discussion, is well underway, just getting kind of the minutia done right now. Well received. The officer was talking about, about the HRA plan that needed more deductible. Went out of his way to tell me how much better he felt this plan is and we appreciate that. But obviously there's going to be pickups between that and also the new payroll system. We're seeing and learning some of the problems. I think we'll get a little bit in the treasurer's report coming up in a few about problems we've experienced, but they're ironing out. And overall, it's going to be a lot better. We used to get countless complaints about what the stuffs did and didn't show under ADP run in terms of, you know, hours that they have for vacation, sick leave, et cetera. It didn't really, and tracking it became a real problem. So they've been having frequent meetings with the new payroll company, which is refreshing because we didn't have that ability with ADP run. It was, you know, call up the Philippines customer service office and good luck to you. Now, on Long Island, I think they're based, they are always there. I hear at all time that they're having Zoom discussions about how to fix this, how to make this work right. And even how to create, you know, fixes to things that may have been misissued and to warn everybody about it. So we're getting there, but between the healthcare and the payroll system, I couldn't be happier right now of staff moving that along. So thanks to all them for what they've done to make that work. Employee handbook, the board received a very early draft that's being reviewed by our attorneys, both Carla and Elaine in this situation for where this crossover and certain things. So we're going to wait for their response. I know you've been working similarly, Corinca, I think it is, it just had one. And so you've got some ideas already probably where we might be making some changes on it. Also get some feedback from staff. I've asked them to read for a one time to see if anything's standing out. It's completely not the way we do things around here or it just wouldn't work ultimately. So I would ask the board to hold comments for now. Let's let attorneys and some staff kind of give us that first overview. I'm going to collect the staff stuff and we'll make sure that we give plenty of opportunity for the board, you know, to give feedback once we're in a better spot with this. But it's, it's early. I, I leaf through it and I can already tell that it's, it's real early in this process. And it's not all stuff that we necessarily conveyed to them. I think there's a lot of void of place stuff that doesn't necessarily work here. Does Zach?
I would be interested in, you know, staff comments on that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm going to collect them all and.
You'll share them.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Does Zach, I will elect defer to you on that in a minute so I'm not worried with all that. Town of Milton did not approve last month the fire contract. Apparently they're waiting until Wednesday this month to approve the 2025 agreement.
I think their public hearing is this, is this Wednesday.
It is. And so, you know, we kind of hustled to get it done last month. Hopefully that would be done in time for some of the third. It did not happen. But nonetheless, I will most likely attend that meeting in case there's any questions with respect to it. But otherwise, that is where it stands. Moving forward, just to correct something I said before about other rates in Milton. I suggested Rock City was going to go to a dollar thirty six a thousand. It is actually a dollar thirty one point one, a dollar thirty four point one cents up from about a dollar thirty one. The difference is based on assessment growth that may have thrown off a little bit. I don't know what happened here with Harmony Corners. They were at a buck nineteen, they went up to a buck forty eight, twenty nine cent increase. I know they had nineteen percent overall revenue growth that they were looking for in Milton. I, I don't know if there was an assessed value drop off or something that occurred there. I've got to really look at the math. But oddly enough, Harmony Corners, who was always behind Rock City, is now ahead of Rock City in terms of what they're getting. And we are officially, according to tax bills that were mailed out, at ninety six point nine cents per thousand, not ninety six point seven cents. Again, some assessment differentials may have thrown off by the two tenths of a cent that we thought was coming in. But again, just to be clear, Rock City, a dollar thirty four one, Harmony Corners, a dollar forty eight zero, and us ninety six point nine cents is what it's at. And I probably should fix that on Facebook. Actually, I didn't notice it. I put ninety six seven until I saw last night the actual number. Speed signs, we probably should be purchasing more than they are wildly popular locally. Even message when they're not working in the winter time because of sun exposure issues that occur more in the winter, which I don't. I'm happy to actually get that feedback because it means that people are relying on these signs more too. And so something to think about, especially as we get to our budget in March, I'll probably be putting a little bit more money into that based on the feedback we're getting. You've got one now on your street, I think. How's it working?
It's not working at the moment, but.
It was one day, it wasn't the next. It was weird, yeah.
I support those speed signs. They really do work. I like it. I'm glad it's there, but it's not working at the moment.
Your, your street's a little bit off because of sun exposure issues. I think on that street is.
It's solar power.
Yeah. And so we either might need to move and get a better exposure on east west on that or something. Also probably get the snow off of it when snow is actually on the solar panel. But. Yeah, we've got a job there.
Is it kind of hot? Is it? I don't like it.
It is. No, well, that's also to protect it. No, that's to protect it from people damaging those things too. But I was glad to see they moved that one from Prospect Street, which was around a bend anyway. So it wasn't much, never known from that one. But on your street, which is on School Street, continuing the thirty miles per hour in that direction, I think is important.
So how many we got on that?
I believe it is six. Oh, six or eight. I've got actually a parent inventory and one of which is the school districts. So it might be seven around plus the one. But the new ones, the new ones we bought that have that data collection, cloud stuff and whatnot, I think have been pretty dynamic for us to just watch it. Like I said, I've done the Facebook post on the one that's on Fairground Hill, but you won't see it until you're over the crest of the hill. And that was the one that had the most people speeding when they got to the top of the hill. And to be able to identify that and tell folks, hey, we're going to get police out there if we don't see a change on that. Again, only have two police, you know, in a shift at a time. It sort of gives us the ability to better mobilize resources even for some of the extra costs. But in this case, the first batch they sold as at the same cost as the ones that didn't have the cloud. Now, that was a special they did for us. It would probably be a little bit more. But I would advise us to continue with the cloud service versions of them because I think it's shown a value that maybe there's savings we can get in other ways on this down the line. We don't want to put a pop up, for instance, for, you know, doing speed analysis. Here's a way to sort of reduce what's going on. Also, still waiting here on the twenty five mile per hour study grant that we had put in for. We did get acknowledged by the CRTC about submission, but obviously it was just waiting for, I think, next month. That is when they, their goal is usually for them. You know, Town Center, provision of water there. We are still working. Joe Lanero gives me updates every week. He's working directly with the developers, Sam Scott folks and whatnot, to make sure that it is us and not here at Springs providing the water, that we're going to be able to meet the needs, the fire flows and everything else, what we're going to need to do to the pump house, which those, those renovations will be borne by the water district ultimately. We may have to front the money, but we would put it in a plan to recoup that money over ten to twelve years probably for that. Because that pump house wasn't built to serve five hundred plus users back when.
They're going to have a water district and is Milton working on the other one?
Currently, there is a water district there. That's how we are even getting the provision in the first place. Now, some of what they did, expand a little bit off the water district, but their first phase was going to be fully in our district. So that's how we were able to justify, it's going to be us. We have to tell the state that we're going to produce more water, serve more water there because our permit doesn't go to that level because again, it wasn't ever assumed we would need to serve five hundred users. But we're going to have all that done, math plan report is all being done, talks with DOH are being done on that. And then the consolidated districts we're going to do as a second phase, you know, resuming that. We were trying to work it in timing wise with this Milton Town Center work, but it would make more sense to just get Milton Town Center done and make sure that they got what they, or get what they need here so that we are insured to get that, what I can give you to be maybe two hundred ten thousand dollars a year of water revenue from that project. That's not small for us. That's about a twenty percent increase on our current total water revenue.
That's great. The other water districts, you know, now that the Woods Hollow sale has been done, now as part of that agreement was.
To be honest, Ben, I slowed, I slowed them down on that purposely because what we were noticing was they weren't willing originally to buy by our existing district. And the whole notion of consolidating water districts was to say who's controlling what, who's going to provide what down the line. And so when they weren't going to actually abide by the existing district, I said, we're going to stop here until we know for sure that we're serving that district and that's going to stay our service district moving forward because of the investment that was already made by the village and those that had worked to get the village involved in the first place.
When you say they, you mean Town of Milton?
Town, Milton Center.
Milton Town Center, yep. So once we became clear again that we're going to be okay, we're going to be the provider there. I told Delaware Engineering, Milton's engineers, okay, I think we're at a spot now where everybody understands what the ground rules are and move forward again, finishing this up. I don't think they have that much left to do down the line. We just, again, we wanted to order this in a way that Milton, we get assured that two hundred plus thousand if they go to full build out and then the rest of the story gets built in. Water districts, obviously, they're going to require a new IMA agreement, intermunicipal agreement for what happens when something is broken and needs to be fixed. How do we get repaid for that or who fixes it? Under contractual obligation, it would be the village most likely, how we get paid or recoup the expense, how we pay for things like the pump house improvements. Do we bill everybody in the water consolidated water district or can we do segments of that district that it serves, things like that?
I mean, Milton was working on that over a year ago. I hope that it's somewhere closer to completion than a year ago.
It is. But again, we needed to make sure that we were sustaining our rights and our provision so that we didn't lose customers or potential customers down the line, which I think is a lot more important to make sure that we're going to have our revenues re-rely on instead of just rushing, rushing and then losing our ability to do that later on because something got messed up in the map and the agreements ultimately. So we were being very careful about this and made it clear that that was our district and it needs to remain our district and it was never intended to change in that whole thing. And it looks like the message was received finally on that one.
Yeah. My own concern with all this is being this.
I agree. And that's why the IMA needs to be clear. It's funny because looking back at old tax bills on certain properties in Milton, back to 2010, you can view online, you'll see certain streets have water district fees being paid for X number of years and then stop. And then when you look at the Milton budget, there's indications of the water districts receiving money or holding money, but you can't really tell if they're actively doing it anymore, if they're holding money somehow, what happens to it. Down the line, these are all questions that need to get answered in the end because we don't know. I just can tell you that looking at tax bills, at some point in time, they were doing this the way you would assume. I don't know if it stopped, if they feel like they had enough in reserve or what happened exactly here. But, you know, any water district should have money in reserve for the idea of future damage that could be done to the system. And then when there are a, a larger project gets identified, we come up with a plan for them on how it gets funded. You know, we go bond it and they go pay it back or how. We probably, like I said, for the pump house, we probably could afford to front the money and go collect down the line with nature's component connected to it down the line. That's, you know, one of the benefits of having a fund balance. So, you know, we've made that clear at Milton for all the antagonism that comes across about, hey, you have a large fund balance. Well, these are the things that allows us to do in moments like these when we run out of water, you know, provision like we do. So long story short, Sean, yes, you're right. But it's kind of funny when you look at history that they agreed with us that we, they needed to do something to protect it. And I don't know what's happened over the last ten years that may have changed yet, but when the IMA comes back in, yes, it's going to be.
Well, I just, current DPW staffing levels, we're going to expand, you know, additional five hundred units. Probably not going to be the last expansion. Probably not going to be the last expansion.
One of the things I'm looking at is Bob cannot, can't go on forever. Bob goes on as long as he wants to, as far as I'm concerned, the open service he provides. But we need to eventually understand that it's going to be a larger scenario. Electronic billing and meter readings are going to need to become the norm. Once we add another 500 customers, if Angelica comes online at some point or the infirmary comes on at some point, that's probably another 100-plus customers if there's any residential component in either one of those. So if we can't keep doing this, eventually we've got to figure out another way to do it, and that will take money. And my view is that we probably need to take a good 60 grand of the 210 and consider creating a dedicated position someday down the line. They're not going to build this overnight, obviously, but something keeping in back of your mind is that we probably need to look at how we're maintaining, conducting it to take some pressure off Bob and DPW as well in that respect. So, agreed. Long story short on that.
Yeah, I was thinking more that in these water districts, that the water district would own the infrastructure. They'd be responsible for the.
Well, the town actually is what owns inside water. How does it work with that matter, is there any?
The way that it really works is you have the consolidated water district and the town, the village supplies the water. So we are in this supply. So we deal with the supply. They pay us for the supply. They also pay us in an IMA generally for the maintenance of it. For example, there's water districts, there's IMAs with villages and towns where the village gives all of the water to the town, town consolidates water districts. The town then is charged like four times the amount. It was one thing though, as far as the village president is, because they're, you know, you're allowed to do that. You're allowed to make direct revenue off of that. And then the village takes care of all the infrastructure. They take care of the mains. They take care of, you know, they are the ones that actually have, like we saw training earlier, they have the water, one or one, water two licenses, things of that nature. So the village does all the work, the town collects the bills. Town builds it, the town sends it, puts the money to us. That's generally how it works. There's a lot of nuances that we can put into the IMA once it's all done. They have to consolidate it. Once it's consolidated, we have one IMA with the entire consolidated district.
Which is the appeal to all this because there used to be, we were digging out a bunch of them, we couldn't tell they were active or not or they were right or not at that point. So again, why is it such a mishmash?
I remember having discussions with the bird down the road. There's also something he mentioned, an alternative where you could make agreements where basically once you cross a district outside of the village, they own all the infrastructure, they're responsible for maintenance degree. And you would just put a meter at that point in the large main and we would know how much water and we bill them for the water and they're responsible for collecting it. It reduces the amount of infrastructure the village has to maintain.
The problem there is our reliance on the minimums. And so it doesn't make it easy in terms of the map that goes with that to determine how the minimums apply or don't apply. And so, you know, equitability tells us that while I hear what you're saying, because the minimums derive us so much revenue, you've got to be careful on something like that too.
And also, a lot of towns just don't have a water department. They don't have the licensed folks. They don't have the staff and they don't want to deal with it.
No, town of Milton does not. They don't want to be in the water business, even though we've had to break the news to them. To a certain degree, you are in the water business. You know, she's right about that.
But yeah, you can, you can obviously do it either way, but what I've seen generally is the village does the heavy lifting.
Let me move us here because we only have about eight minutes before we hit that two-hour mark here, so let's go to our reviews and reports real quick. But I want to get you guys all fully updated on where we are, what we're moving toward for, you know, especially in the next few months here and fully brief everybody. Treasurers report, I'm just going to tell you briefly that look for your water bills February 1st. Complete payroll, so you explain, you know, some of the issues I already talked to you about. My medical cards are out. The HRA cards are either received or being received actively. Sales tax was, again, a little bit off, 0.33% last same period for what was shown in December, which is again, two months later than the actual dates, so that's October. Year-to-date, still up by only 0.03%, but obviously we did because of the assessment ratios less. So we're probably down on sales tax for calendar year 2024. And big risks, related issues were provided to the board. Bernard, why don't you go ahead with your liaison reports?
All right. I'll start with the Business Association. Just a reminder that Chocolate Fest is coming up, February 7th, starting at 5:00 PM. There's, as far as I know, there's 20 participants so far. Remember 5:00 PM because if you don't get there at 5:00 PM, it might run out. We didn't get a lot of chocolate last year, but it's always a really good event to get people downtown.
There's going to be enough.
Okay.
That will use promise.
We'll go to the bottom of the museum. You know, just, again, this is another effort from the Business Association to get people there downtown, especially in these cold winter months, which are tougher for our small businesses. So looking forward to that. The zoning advisory committee, they received the second working draft from the consultant. Zach is going to be reviewing that and will be providing comments at the end of the month. Chris, their consultant, will be meeting with them at the next meeting, by Zoom, he'll be meeting them, but to walk them through the draft and also to answer any questions. And that'll be next Thursday at 7:00 PM.
I believe so, yeah.
7:00 PM at the Solar Building. And then they're, you know, they're going to review, one final review of the draft code and will be posting it for the public ahead of a public workshop that they plan for March 20th.
Yeah, I think in February, he said, and there's a strike figure on it, February they'll be posting it up as well.
This one will go out, okay. Again, the public meeting where there's engagement will be on the 20th of March. And once they get through that, final edits will be made and then the draft will be presented to us for our consideration. The Revitalize Boston Spa, also known as the BOA Steering Committee, BOA's brownfield opportunity area.
Good meeting, Wes, first of all.
Yeah, it's a great team. I really, I think a lot of the folks are just bringing really great perspectives. Our consultants have been giving us a lot of good information. As I mentioned earlier, they did kind of study on the area or village and some demographics that are interesting, becoming more diverse, fully, but more of a diverse community, which is exciting, I think. But there's a lot to believe for that. That will eventually be put, we have the villages like page for BOA, but also there will be a public-facing website separate to that to, for putting up information. That study will be available once it's finalized and other items will be on there so that we can, like a survey, for instance, so folks can engage that way. We also discussed a public engagement plan. We are looking to maybe have the public workshop in April so we wouldn't clash with the zoning advisory committee's public workshops. So more on that. And our next meeting will just be that public meeting, but we communicate via email and if anyone has questions in the meantime, they can reach out to me regarding that. And then I will try to go somewhat quickly for the fire department, but there's some good information. The chief had sent this report to me from the beginning of the year, reflecting on the last year. But specifically for December, there are 43 emergency calls and this included 12 general alarms and two structured fires. And there was two reported fires on Christmas Day. So, I mean, our guys are out there holidays at all times. 2024, though, overall set a record. They had 502 calls. That's over 5,600 man-hours dedicated just to those responses. And yeah, our guys are very busy. We have, I think, one of the most busy fire departments in the area.
When you look at the old tax bills, one of the things that actually I noticed too was, and I had to look up the last time reassessments were done, full reassessments by towns of Milton and Boston, and I think both were 2006, so 19 years ago. And you see the equalization rates in the 90s for a while, kind of going like this for a few years. Then all of a sudden, over the last five or six years, the equalization rate drops down to the low 60s, which tells you that the amount of new assessed value that was created inside those towns and whatnot is immense. And also, you know, the valuations and whatnot that go with it. You learn a lot by when you look at this, that the growth that has occurred in those two towns that were heard of is a lot over the last six years or so.
Yes. Our area has grown extremely rapidly. There, let me see, overall in 2024, there were 18 department training drills, 75 company-level training drills. That's 2,500 man-hours for local training, but also 24 of our fire volunteer firefighters participated in 57 New York State fire classes, which is 780 hours, 88 hours of training at the state level. Also, again, I really applaud their efforts for the education that they, the hour gym education that our fire department does, especially with their young people and, you know, I think we'll see yours this March classes. But there was 1,400 man-hours directly for that just in last year. So total for 2024 of all the response training and safety education, there were 10,000 out, 10,288 hours given by our volunteer firefighters to this community. And I just want to make sure we highlight that and I applaud them for all they do to support us and honestly love on this community with that kind of service.
Amen.
All right, that's it for me.
Mary.
For people looking for something to do during the winter months, the Boston Spa still has their events, or sorry, Boston Spa Library still has their events upstairs. Their book club meets the fourth Wednesday of the month at 3:30. And their fiber arts meetup meets the third Saturday at 1:00 PM so we can get out and associate with other people. The Boston Spa seniors also will be having a pickings session on Wednesday, February 5th. The doors open at 6:00. Music is from 6:30 until 9:00 PM. It's open to the public. There's no entrance fee, but they do request snacks to be brought to share for their meals. And let's see, the events committee, weather committee, if we have enough snow, they are planning on having the sleigh riding down Bath Street this year.
By you saying it, we're going to have a 60-degree next three months. It would melt it.
She had a date?
Yeah.
I think weather committee, they'll probably.
We get enough snow.
Ben.
All right. From Caitlin Park and Rec Chair, Park and Tree Board, has been working behind the scenes to various projects. We applied for a T-Mobile hometown grant to potentially help with improvements in Woods Hole Park and are keeping an eye out for other potential grant opportunities. We also have, we are also working on finalizing recommendations for replacement trees to plant in some of the spaces where trees were recently removed on Milton Ave, as well as for some other vacant planting sites. This will include particular tree species we're planting with both proper planting and soil prepping procedures. So they'll have a workshop on that. Their next meeting is Tuesday, January 20th at 7:00 PM at the Cornell Copper Conference Room. That's all for them. And then the Committee on the Arts, their next meeting is January 27th. They believe it's going to be at 199 Milton Ave, where it was last time.
No, well, no. You have to find a substitute location.
We have to find somewhere else, right? So we don't know where it's going to be. On January 18th, 3 to 5:00 PM, Sounds in Winter String Theory. It's called the String Theory. It's a classical trio. It's free, but you should register because they could run out of room. So that's this Saturday, 3 to 5. And then January 30th, 6 to 9:00 PM at the Real McCoy, they're going to have another open mic night, which was a big success last year. So again, that's January 30th, 6 to 9:00 PM.
Play us music.
With respect to DPW, I want to do two things. First, I will identify that I'm aware you had a good meeting with our DPW staff last week, and so Sean will be DPW liaison before, appreciate that. Just in case, I'm going to have Jen read the list of stuff going on for this meeting, then you'll take that over from here right now. Jen, if you just want to stand up and speak, I know you can be loud. I know you can.
I don't usually have a problem with production. They plowed a couple of times in the last couple of weeks. One was on Christmas. That plowing included a water main break that they were all fixing, so we thanked the town of Milton for helping them out during Christmas Eve. Brush and leak pickup is complete, so please don't call the office and ask whether they're going to be down your street. We are done for the season. They did replace piping at the pump house wall number two that had broken. The trees that were taken down on Route 50 will be replaced in the spring along with the sidewalks. Just isn't the season for doing that right now. This evening, you all voted on the surplus inventory, so hopefully we will be able to get that out of the parking lot and gone in the next couple of weeks.
Amen.
Very excited about that. Thank you for voting yes. All Christmas decorations are down. The tree's been taken down. We thank the family again for donating the absolutely most beautiful tree we've ever seen.
Still getting compliments on that.
It was awesome. But I will need a tree for next year, so anyone who thinks they have one, let me know. I don't want us to have to start looking again in October. The, we did have that pipe freeze in the Oakley Station. We had to have quick response coming to clean that up. We did have some violations on our DEC fuel tank, we did have DEC violations on the fuel tank. Those have all been fixed. They're up to date. They are in full compliance. Pete and Tyler were certified as A to B tank operators. That helped with the compliance. Tyler has passed the CBL test and is now a Class V truck driver, so we have one more plow driver. The two new fighters are doing very well and they are studying for their Class V permit, which is a conditional deployment now for DPW, so that's good for you. Once they get that, they get them into the Teamsters training program. So we thank the Teamsters for helping us out with that.
Amen.
Also, the EPA lead and copper surveys are still out there. If you have one, please fill it out and drop it off. You can put it in the little silver box up front. You can bring it to me. You can put it in the mail, but we need those back. So thanks for that. I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, we are beyond the two-hour mark and we want to finish up that section at least. But at this point, according to rules procedure, we are required to go to public comment number two on any issue for three minutes per speaker. You are, or we are, or I am, I guess, allowed, basically, it's worded, to go up to 30 minutes for this section if necessary. So public comment on any issue for three minutes. And then we are allowed up to 15 minutes on just board response at that point, not the full count of all other business, but board response. So anybody that would like to speak, I see you here already on Zoom. Get that in a second. Anybody in the, yep, go ahead, John Comey would like to speak. Go ahead up to the podium. If you could, John, appreciate it. Again, the folks remind me to make this change later. Christine, thanks again for all that. Thank you.
Okay, John Comey, 132 Bath Street, Boston Spa. As you know, I'm chair of the Historic District Commission. We had a meeting today, this morning, and a while ago, we were asked by Zach to review the historic district law that we have in the village. And we started doing that. And in October, we had a meeting with, and one of the people at the meeting, this purpose of meeting, was from Shippel, a state office of historic preservation. And based upon that presentation we had, we've come to the conclusion that the current historic district law, which was written 40 years ago, is really obsolete at this point in time. That the state has a model code for municipalities that they will recognize and will allow a municipality to be considered what is called a certified community. A certified community then is one that has various protections in place for historic locations, for the districts or landmarks or what have you, and a certain way of proceeding is called follows that. The other thing is, once you're a certified community, then a community is able to get grants to inventory areas, whether it be. whether it be, um, districts, neighborhoods, or what have you, and for the necessary, uh, that's necessary for an application for a national registry, state registry status. That person who spoke to us in, um, October indicated that our district that we have, sir, you would be eligible for that, but so also all the portions of the village. Once we get that inventory done and we apply for national registry status for these particular neighborhoods and places, and we are then placed within that national registry, the, um, restrictions on the federal level are very mild. It's basically only if there's federal money involved. But the property owners are then able to obtain a twenty percent tax credit for improvements of their properties so long as they follow the standards of the Department of Interior. So we're thinking that, yes, if the historic district is a good thing to have and has not been utilized as it should be as far as being able to promote it, uh, not just in the village, but around the community, around the capital district.
Twenty seconds, twenty seconds, John.
Yep, but, um, also, we should be setting up ourselves to, um, make it possible for people to get this tax credit. So what we are going to be recommending to the ZAC, you know, be coming out, I thought it might be tonight, but it might be tomorrow, um, A, we've taken the model law, we have modified it for the village, and we'll be sending that out to Zach, to you, and to, uh, and then we'll also be applying it to our draft minutes of this past meeting so the public can take a look at it.
Yeah, John. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the room? Mike?
Good evening, thank you. Mike, I can meet you through your onboard ride. Uh, I'd like this statement to be included with the minutes, and I'll give you a copy. Um, I resided in the town of Milton for nearly forty years in my home, as being in an area protected by the village's fire department. I want to say as clearly as possible that I appreciate and value the commitment, dedication, energy, and time this volunteers offer our, our community. At the special village board meeting on December sixteen, the mayor spent about eight minutes presenting his thoughts on the fire contract between the village and the town of Milton. In his comments, the mayor called me out by name, but I was not given any opportunity to respond. I think it is poor policy for any elected official to call out a member of the public and not to allow that person the chance to respond makes it even worse. I hope that no member of the public is subjected to that treatment in the future. In the limited time available to me, I want to cover a few points. The village and the town of Milton have had a series of fire contracts, contracts since the nineteen-sixties. The most recent multi-year contract expired December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. I believe that the town, with good intentions, has tried since October of twenty-twenty-three to negotiate with the village to arrive at a mutually agreeable contract. A contract for twenty-twenty-four was finalized only in the last couple of months, and a contract for twenty-twenty-five is about to be wrapped up. Since October of twenty-twenty-three, the mayor has continually referred to the tax rate that is assessed by the town on town residents. And he has sought to have the town increase that rate to provide funds to the fire department. I believe that the town has a different understanding of how this fire contract under state law is negotiated. Basically, the town believes that the starting point is for the village to indicate a some certain, that is, a specific dollar amount for what is needed to provide fire protection services. With respect to the fire contract, town officials have made repeated attempts to better understand the budgetary needs of the fire department that have just begun to receive concrete debt. The members of the Milton Town Board have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that funds, tax care funds, are handled prudently. The town board recognizes that fire protection is vital to the interests of town residents. I hope that the village and the town will work together to negotiate an agreement for years after twenty-twenty-five that meets the needs of the fire department and is fair to all residents. Thank you.
Mike, I just want to be clear. Are you reading that as part of the budget committee?
That's my personal vision.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because that was how I was addressing you as my budget committee.
It would be nice to be given an opportunity to respond at that time.
I just wanted, if you were gonna do that. Just want to make sure.
That's my point.
Is there any, uh?
Uh, yes, there's two people up top.
Go ahead, take him.
Uh, Erin McCready, Milwaukee, patiently. Erin, go ahead.
Hello, Erin McCready, thirty-five Hyde Boulevard. Um, this is just a question slash request on the Wizwall Park design. I, I, I think I heard that there was gonna be some discussions on cutting or just figuring out how to have some savings on the Wizwall Park design. And as a resident, I'm just hoping that we will get a chance to see what the designs were from the agency before any kind of changes to cut costs might impact design. Um, just because design is really subjective. And I, you know, I would just like the opportunity to see what the agency's putting forward before we cut anything that might really impact the look and feel.
Erin, that's not the intent. The intent was that we're cutting costs as in things we can do with contractors to, uh, essentially make sure that we're staying within the confines of state law with respect to procurement and purchasing, but at the same time maximize possibly donations of, uh, different pieces of this, et cetera. Uh, the designs aren't even shown. Uh, we're getting just very specific, meet some bounds type stuff at this point, uh, from Studio A so that, uh, contractors can bid out if it comes down to that, or at least know what, uh, they're gonna be putting in, uh, with materials and labor and stuff like that. So the intent was not to cut corners. It was just to say that there may be methodologies to save money naturally inside the wall.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Donna Darderas, I believe, I see up there. Is that actually her?
Yep.
Let's get her on. Donna, how are you?
Good. Uh, Donna Darderas, sixty-four Middle Street, Boston Spa. I just wanted to comment on the report that trustee Baskins gave for the Arts Council Committee and the upcoming concert at Brookside Museum this Saturday. Even though it is a free concert, we have encouraged people to register, and we are currently at capacity for that concert. Um, so hopefully, anyone that wishes to attend has already gone in and registered. Um, we will take, uh, walk-ins on a space-available basis. First come, first served. We usually end up having a few people that register and then don't come. But I just, those concerts have been an amazing success, I think, for both the Arts Council and the museum. So I didn't want anyone to come thinking they were going to attend and then be terribly disappointed when they found there was no space available.
Well, congratulations on walking in, but thanks for that info to make sure we avoid a calamity, uh, on this weekend. But that sounds great, that, uh, so well subscribed to, Donna.
We're very happy with it.
Amen, thank you. And I think that's it for Zoom currently at least. So if anybody else has a comment for Zoom, please, uh, raise your hand now for our old piece. Jean, I think you want to speak, so go ahead. And right now, we're at nine sixteen, we have nineteen minutes left in this public comment section, according to the rules. So go ahead.
Jeanne Morozzi, Tenmore Glory Lane, Boston Spa, again. Again, proud wife of an Eagle Matlee Boston Spa Fire Department firefighter. Again, we hear how much we appreciate and respect the fire department. And if there's one thing I can't stand, it's the encounters that know nothing about firefighting that say how much should be spent and how things should be done. That really chaps my ass. The record number of calls this year, the majority, I'll give you the order, Town of Ballston, Village of Ballston, Town of Milton, the most calls. You saw the numbers Frank just presented for what? They're getting, uh, per thousand. The village is getting nine, I'll round up, ninety-seven cents per thousand versus up to one?
Forty-eight.
One forty-eight. Is that appreciating and respecting your fire department? You see what's going on in California? People that don't know what they're doing trying to manage fire departments. No one is learning. Disaster can happen anywhere. And if you think you're gonna rely on the feds or the state to get you out of it, you're wrong. It's gonna be your local people. It's gonna be your disaster preparedness. We won't even get into that topic, what the town could do now.
This one. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you.
Apparently, people don't like to be corrected.
Mike, we've kept it pretty low-key respectful all night. Let's keep it that way. Both, both, both ways.
I would ask for one minute to respond.
No. Continue.
And I, I really have a problem with somebody that is on the budget committee coming in here and speaking as if they represent the town. If the town has something to say about the fire department, the town should be here talking about the fire department. I'm getting a little sick and tired of the way these people are being treated. Ninety-seven cents on a thousand, and today's market is not enough money. And it's gonna, it's gonna cause a big problem. You wait and see. And it causes problems with morale, okay? And it, ask yourselves, and you probably all don't know, why the fire department was so rushed to approve that budget. I bet none of you know why, do you? They were bullied into it because there were threats being made of taking the territory away. Wonderful, yes, but we appreciate and respect the fire department.
Anybody else in the outroom? Okay, and last chance for Zoom. Actually, I don't want this thing, there we go. Uh, anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Last call? And go on. Uh, up to fifteen minutes for a board response to comment only. All right, maybe Mike.
Yeah, um, this is, uh, not comment only if you can respond to anything, not limited.
No, it's board response.
It says, but not limited.
No, it's in, in the rules procedure, it's board response only for fifteen minutes, Ben.
Frank, it says right on the agenda, including but not limited to board response.
The rules procedure dictate what the rules are.
So you changed the rules procedure that's on us?
No, the rules procedure, this is exactly what was there last year. Same thing. So I'm just being clear, and I made the statement ahead of time.
Including but not limited to board comments, a public board response.
Dan, Dan, you got a nice pair of questions.
So you know what? The discrimination or harassment policy, thank you for distributing that today, but it had the wrong compliance officers on it. It had Sean and Christine Fitzpatrick.
There's no public comment related to this.
The ZAC, there was a comment on that. Uh, I remain disappointed that this, uh, board, at least the three in the majority, uh, support the hiding of the ZAC records. The committee charter says, "ZAC records shall be available to the village at any time, including for production of the public upon request," unquote. The sidewalk law, um, what I think is important to tell.
There was no public comment on sidewalks tonight.
The sidewalk, so I'm gonna say one word about sidewalk law, which is, I'm very happy that, um, we are fixing sidewalks. I, I'm glad the village is in the sidewalk fixing business. I'd like, I'd like it if they, uh, fixed everyone's sidewalk and just took it over. Um, but the important thing is, if we're fixing sidewalks for one group of people, everyone should know that if there's a tree, that a public tree that has, uh, has damaged your sidewalk, you are, um, the village is responsible for the damage to that sidewalk. And that applies to everyone with public trees. Not just a few people, it's everybody. I actually asked NICOM a year ago about that. They had a different interpretation.
You're out of order right now. Thank you for that.
I am not, because the board comments say that.
All a comment.
The, uh, the other thing I'd just like to say is, back in, uh, December ninth, the last regular meeting, you, uh, made a slanderous claim that Sean and I were insulting DPW. And that is offensive to us and also to all of DPW, because you're implying that there's people out there, including trustees, where some have disparaging them, and that is absolutely false. And in fact, we have the most, uh, respect for what they do. They work their butts off, they put in many hours of overtime, and they're essential to this village. They've worked, many of them have worked over thirty years here. Their, their dedication is incredible. And none of us appreciate you telling, making mistakes of us insulting them, because that is absolutely untrue. As was your follow-up, uh, comment that I took you to the ethics for things like this, which I have never taken to ethics board.
Maybe he's saying about you.
You, you said, quote, Ben, you've taken me into ethics for things like this. Ben never did. And I've never taken that for it, even when you were voting on sending money to your sister's charity. I never, that brought you to the board.
My charity?
Excuse me.
Yeah, the birdhouse charity.
Excuse me. First off, motion to strike all comments made that were against the, uh, policy of board response at this time.
It says right here.
Read the rules procedure, Ben.
She doesn't have to include, just.
Other business, including but not limited to board response to public comment. It's always included anything we want to talk about.
Read the rest of the rules procedure, Ben.
Frank, you talked, you talked about, what, about forty-five minutes? When do we get to talk?
You did.
We have no opportunity to talk.
Your liaison reports.
No, what if we want to talk about other things? We should be able to talk about other things.
Our rules and procedures.
This sounds like the rules of procedure has something that contradicts First Amendment right of free speech.
You're an elected official, you're, you have your freedom of speech outside of this space, but we follow rules and procedures. And our meeting has gone long tonight, so that is why we're running.
You spoke for about an hour yourself.
So the public doesn't.
You don't think any of that was worth it?
It went long because we had an exhaustive list from the mayor, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But it's not an equal amount of time for a trustee.
All you guys are doing is complaining right now. So you're not really offering any information to the public.
Do you hear unfairness of it?
Do you have any, uh, board response? Do you have any board response, motion to?
Well, I, I actually have response to public comment.
Okay, go right ahead, then. You, come on.
Um, so in the equation for figuring out the fire protection rate, yeah, there's the rate, but the other part, which is actually more important, is the per thousand. That actually comes up with the total budget. So even though it might be ninety-six or ninety-seven cents, if there's many thousands of development, much more than some of the other towns, you're gonna get a much larger amount of money. So that's the thing I think that is lost. We just look at the rates. We don't look at actually the per thousand square feet of development. And those rates get adjusted so that.
Do you work for the village?
What?
Do you work for the village?
He's just speaking the truth, Frank.
No, actually, it's not really.
But according to the presentation for Town of Milton, it's actually illegal to do it based on.
Okay, and attorney will now address some certain versus rate question, because this has come up and been asked and answered several times.
No, I, I've given this response, I've given it to attorney Craig, and I've given him the, you know, the comptroller's opinion. Some certain does allow by percentage, you're by assessed value by a per thousand. Jim Craig agrees with me, so I, I've heard some emails two years ago about that, but I don't want to.
So what is the rate?
I, I, wait, wait, hang on, hang on. I'm still talking.
Okay.
It's just easier for Terry, when only one of us is talking, to get it down. It's easier for the folks up there. Yeah, I deal with this in court all the time.[1701.62] I'm happy to send again, and I'm pretty sure I've sent in the past, to some certain argument, to some certain law, to some certain comptroller's opinion, if you'd like.
Sure.
That'd be great, because the comptroller of Town of Boston thinks it's not proper to base it on.
I understand, but the state comptroller says it's.
All right, yeah, that'd be great to see. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay, so with respect to what you're saying, that's great, except the assumption is when assessed value grows, it means that the number of calls you're generating to that location are going to increase in the cap, based on what she read.
That's not necessarily true.
Well, it's proving to be true.
Well, it's just the value of the existing square footage.
That's not the way it works. Assessed value has equalization rates that take out those inconsistencies. So every year, the equalization rate changes, the assessed value doesn't. The only thing that happens is the additional assessed value means that there's additional properties that go online in that town. That means there's more things for us to protect. When you see assessed value go up, it is not based on, unless they do a full reassessment, which they haven't done since 2006, it's based on new properties, new things to protect, or new ADUs or something like that that causes an individual property reassessment to occur. There aren't that many of those that happen year to year in that respect. But the long story short is, that means that your machinery or your equipment is being operated more, so it's going to come obsolete faster because of, you know, the repairs needed and everything else. I'm not trying to be argumentative here, Sean, but I've heard this one before, and it's frustrating because the reality isn't that. So yes, we appreciate the fact that there was a whatever percent increase based on what the assessed value allowed it to do. But in reality, when we look at it from trucks and stuff like that, I have to repair that ladder truck even more frequently because, more or less, it's going through a repair shop. The more runs it has to do with the more calls. That's the thing we have to be aware of in these situations, that it's not all pure. That's why the rate makes sense to utilize because it's showing a certain, all things being equal mentality, what is, what are you receiving each year in reality, year to year?
Right, and you just said new property, so that's an increase in square footage of property and would not affect your overall allocation.
You get more money, you get more runs, so it's a null effect. Again, the rate is what I look at because if the rate increases, that means you're getting more money over and above what that nullity did in that situation. So if the rate only goes up from 96 cents to 96.9 cents, you're really getting nothing. Because again, the assumption is that because they had assessed value growth, we're going to have more runs in Milton over the next year on average.
But in the end, we're getting more money than the previous year.
We're getting more money, but we're also getting more repairs, probably, more.
But if they cancel each other's jobs, then that's what it's supposed to have.
So we're getting nothing. And then the price of that equipment goes up every year through inflation. You're not getting that understanding already. So we're not getting inflation.
If it's not capturing inflation.
It's not.
Well, that's something entirely different.
And that's the problem I've been trying to point out. We've got a twofold problem in Milton right now. It's inflation, and it's also the price of trucks that weren't ever replaced. We know they were at 36 cents for a certain period or whatever it was. And I'm going to wrap it up for everybody, because I did go back to 2010 purposely to show some things here. I do remember the numbers frequently enough and know what the numbers say and should say. But the point being that 36 cents was happening at a time when people were not replacing any equipment meaningfully. And so, yeah, we just replaced some trucks. And, you know, the supervisor wants to kind of lay back on the fact that it went up to 96 cents over a certain number of years. Went from 36 to 55, 66 to 76, to 86, to 96, to 96, to 96.9 now. And the problem is that we only basically changed out a couple pieces of major equipment when we have a lot more major equipment that was going to break at this point, and it's breaking. And it's breaking us in terms of the repairs that are necessary on those things. And we're trying to do it, but when you have a ladder truck that's probably going up to, based on my conversations with folks that are the main suppliers out there from Sutton, 2.6 to 2.7 million dollars, because now there's a new emission standard that's going to be required in 2027. And if we don't take delivery of the truck before 2027, we've got a new engine that has to be basically modified into these. And they also warn us against being the first adopters of that engine because there are probably problems with the new technologies, their fear. But that being said, 2.6, 2.7 million dollars, that's something that should have cost 2.2 probably last year, this year. That becomes the problem here, and what I'm trying to.
I understand that, and it seems, from my understanding, with the meeting with, you know, some of, you know, the fire department, and what I've heard from Milton committees is, I think they're open to the discussion of increasing rates, but I think they just want increased transparency as to far as whatever our equivalent fire protection rate within the village is.
So here's the question, we're running to the 15, but here's something I'll leave you with, is a question maybe to ask Milton, if you ever get the chance to. We always hear how fire districts and fire protection districts are handled differently. Fire districts hold their own votes, hold their own tax cap hearings, and basically hand the budget over to the town, say, here, collect it. We, on the other hand, have to go through this process with the town, inside their budget, inside their tax cap. I get it. However, the question you got to ask is, this year, when Army Coroner said they needed 19% more, did the Town of Milton scrutinize that budget to tell townspeople of theirs that live in the Army Coroner's district, hey, boy, you should be active in this. You should probably understand what's going on here. Or appear themselves to say, we don't think this is fair, or we think this is fair. Same thing in Rock City, which went up to 134, same questions, same thoughts. There is every right for the Town of Milton, if they're protecting their taxpayers, to still be involved in that process. They haven't been. But they're the first ones to insult us when it comes to our water rates or, you know, how we handle our water even. You saw some of that from the comptroller in some of the communications we received. They're questioning our fund balance size. These are things that they shouldn't even have an opinion on publicly in that manner, but they do, and they're going to put that out there and question us. That's stuff that they feel they have the right to question. Well, they have the right to question Army Coroner's. They have the right to question Rock City. Or is it mean, does it mean that they actually understand that $134, $148 are actually within the realm of what it takes to run a fire department in 2025? I have a feeling it's that. And then the question to ask is, if you're not questioning those, why are you questioning 96.9 cents? Because you know what? We could do a lot with anything extra they gave us. We don't have LoSAP. They fund the LoSAP to Rock City. They fund the LoSAP to the Army Coroner's. We don't have one at all, let alone the equipment issues and everything else.
Yeah, I think we need to reestablish trust with Town of Milton. I think there's a trust deficit, and they don't trust your numbers, and they need to see something that actually.
I don't trust their numbers.
Okay, well, that's a problem.
Because I'm looking, I'm looking at the numbers of 148 and 134, and I'm saying, how does that make sense? How does it make sense that when we show up to every fighter, the Town of Milton, and everybody's getting equal fire service, the Town of Milton, a variance of 54% exists between the lowest rate to the highest rate being paid by their taxpayers for fire service? That is a sin. That is not right. And I understand the village has some economies of scale that we can offer as savings because, you know, Terry is already hired, so you know there's a portion of her salary, but she's going to be cheaper, and Jennifer's going to be cheaper, and Melissa's going to be cheaper, and Rebecca, et cetera, for, you know, the stuff that Army Coroner's or Rock City has to pay for, their books and their clerk duties and their audit and their accounting. Okay, we have economies of scale that we offer as a village. We do.
Let's give them the information there.
Maybe $134, Ben, we have. We've provided it. They don't want it, they don't like it in the form we give it to them. They understand, how do you break it out? We're not going to have Terry waste her time, or Melissa waste her time, logging their hours toward fire department. You know what? They're 14% of our budget. 14% of their, our budget.
We need to work with them. They are very important partners, and relationships are in the gutter. And somehow, we need to sit down civilly and without insult and figure this out.
And we have, and guess where it got us? 96.9 cents. Can I get a motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at 9:35 PM? Trustee Price Push? Trustee Fandingside, discussion? All in favor? Close, closing period. Yeah, we'll see you in two weeks.